I think he thought Dennis was coming.
Yeah, I thought he was.
All right, ready?
We're ready.
All right. Welcome to the Blairstown Township Committee meeting Wednesday, September 14th, 2022. We have an opening roll call. Kristin?
Mr. McAtora?
Here.
Mr. Orcott?
Here.
Mrs. Van Valkenburg?
Here.
Mrs. Waldron?
Here.
Mayor Morehead?
Here.
Can we please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of this public meeting through a legal notice published in the New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger following the township's annual reorganization meeting at which the 2022 meeting schedule was adopted. We have a little moving around of our agenda items tonight.
Really? Never mind, go ahead.
Before we go into the public comment section, we'd like to talk about some stormwater tier changes that we've, we're seeing with, with our township and what it can mean to us and the expenses that could, could arise. So Dennis Keenan? Dennis is from French and Perlo, our, our-
Engineer.
Engineering firm. And so you, you've gone over exactly what it means to go from a tier B to a tier A, correct?
Correct.
And yeah, make sure that microphone is in front of you. And can you give me, give us like an overview on how this happened? What, what's going on to precipitate this?
Sure. So the way it is historically, since they enacted the MS4 permitting, which the MS4 permitting, just to give you a little background, is essentially your stormwater permitting that has a municipality that gives you the permission to have stormwater discharge from your roads, headwalls, discharging streams and things like that. And it sets the criteria for each municipality to maintain those structures and make sure we have clean water in, in the state. There's a lot of guidelines that go along with it, but that's kind of the core behind it. It's something that comes down from the EPA. So it's, it's pretty standard throughout the country. Each state's a little bit different. So New Jersey, we've had, all, all municipalities fit in one of two categories, tier A or tier B. Tier A was the higher category where you had more requirements. I want to say more urban areas, but it, it was most of the state. And then the second category being tier B was municipality like Blairstown where we've had lesser requirements. We didn't have to go through and clean out catch basins on a regular basis, basis, sweep roads, buy an inventory and mapping of inlets in the municipality. So there are a lot of things and the reporting that we have to do on a yearly basis as a tier B municipality is pretty simple. There's not a whole lot to it. So now what the state has done, we have not been singled out, but they've singled out all tier B municipalities and said, you're all moving up. We're not doing tier B municipalities. Everybody's a tier A. So that on the court brings us up to this, this next level where we have a lot more, more of these requirements. Additionally, on top of that, they are increasing the requirements for all tier A municipalities. So we're kind of getting double hit on that. So I'm, I'm going to pass this document that DEP issued out just-
We don't have that in our packets. Yep.
I put it in their packets.
There's, there's a lot of, there's even training for us.
Yes.
There's a lot of stuff in there.
There's a lot of stuff. So there, there's a whole lot of things and it's almost, I, I think we can kind of briefly kind of brush over all the items, but we kind of need to dig into them and figure out really what the implications are with all of them because it's not, it's not always straightforward. We, we got to find a way to cut through it to some degree, get it done, get it done simply to cover the requirements and check the boxes and, and make sure we're compliant without generating a whole lot of headache and expenses.
How are they monitoring? How are they going to monitor?
We have to submit a report every year.
Engineering? The township or the, you, engineering?
It's, it's always been through.
It'll always be through you.
Yeah.
So isn't it true, there's a lot of pushback and a lot of municipalities want to stay with the tier V?
Correct.
So what is our exposure if we stay with tier V?
I don't think there, I don't think there's an option to, to stay. They're not, they're not giving the municipalities an option. Let's put it that way.
We can't appeal it? We can't?
You can certainly appeal it. I've had a meeting with Hardwick Township who, and we can certainly, the next step is to really go to our DEP coordinator, stormwater coordinator, and say, we want a meeting. We object to this. And that's, I think that's, it's good to get on the record.
Actually, it's a good topic. We're having this back to circulate that form of resolution that Frankfurt just did last night, which objects to the tier P and that's still in the government's office and the DEP and everything else. And that's not on the agenda tonight, but we could also potentially adopt that and get that to you for that meeting.
Absolutely.
You know, there, there is a lot of pushback. I, I don't know whether that pushback is going anywhere. My guess is it probably doesn't go anywhere, but it's my place to do it.
So again, what's, what's our exposure if we don't do it?
We have to. This is not a question. If we don't do it.
What if we don't?
Where's the legal municipalities on this?
What, what is the arm of the law that's going to say, you know, what's our, again, what's the ramifications?
Fines?
I would imagine.
Taking away grants? I mean, I mean-
We don't have any grants.
No, but I'm not, not on this particular issue, but-
Yeah, I, I, I'm assuming there will be fines. So I haven't heard of a municipality that has just-
Said no?
Said no. We're not going to comply, not submitted any documentation. I mean, I think DEP's generally been forgiving. When we've gone through audits on MS4 permitting, DEP is not trying to drop a hammer on anybody. They've generally been pretty cooperative and they want to see, all right, you're going in the right direction. I don't, I'm not going to get into the details. They just want to know you're, you're working out of your given.
I mean, the, the training, the, there's a website required, you know, and there's a lot more stringent reporting, what have you. But there's also, I think the, the biggest thing that we've seen is the street sweeper. We have a street sweeper, but it doesn't fit the bill for what they, what they need. We would have to purchase, and that's, it's a big chunk of money. That's, it's like buying a fire truck.
Yeah.
So what are the other financial impacts? I mean, he just spoke about something that's huge.
Yeah, that's, that's a big one. And, and the street sweeping is, and the way it is structured now, and I say that is because particularly, that's a, a new requirement. It used to just be that you had to sweep any street that had a sidewalk. Now they're saying you, four times a year, you have to street, sweep any street that has an inlet. And if it doesn't have an inlet, you need to sweep it once a year. So they've changed it. But that's a lot.
And Eric, Eric's comment was, we don't have a street without an inlet.
Really?
So it really means all streets four times a year.
Yes.
There's not even one, there's not even a road that we don't have to sweep.
It's a third of course.
It's, it's, it's-
Dennis, one quick question, and I should know the answer to this. I've been, I've been thinking it's going to come into my head, but what's the acronym? E D T A? E D P A? Public-
Oh, I saw it at some point, but-
Well, it's on to the right on each one of those calls.
It's basically the, it's the effective date of the permit.
Effective date of permitting?
Authority? Authority?
Permit approval or-
The way that should be viewed is anytime they have that E D P A plus three months, that says after your permit is effective, which for us, it would be January 1, you have three months.
So most of this stuff is January 1, but there's some plus three and plus 12 and plus six, plus 48, I think on some of the stuff. Okay.
Yes. So some of the other costly items are, we have to go through and map all the storm inlets?
Oh my God.
Outfall structures and detention basins in the municipality.
A hundred, a hundred inlets, 20% of the inlets, whichever is greater, which puts us at a hundred, you know, we-
It's a thousand.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. But so-
So this takes effect, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think also that, that includes detention basins on subdivisions like practically allegedly maintained because even though they are supposed to be maintained by homeowners associations, they're, they're under our permit. So-
They're in our town. Right.
Yeah. And it is, they're putting the responsibility on the municipalities to make sure that those entities are maintained properly. So it's an enforcement mechanism that we're supposed to have in place. I'll say this, I haven't seen a municipality that has an effective enforcement mechanism. They're just, it's too complicated and, but DEP's going to keep pushing that.
Do you have, do you have class A municipalities now?
Do you?
You have plenty, I'm sure, right?
Yeah. Yes, we're, we're doing that now.
So this is, this became effective as of when? It's been under discussion for how long and is becoming effective when?
This would be effective January 1.
I mean, that, that blows us our budgets.
How many tier Bs do you still have and how many are pushing back?
He just said-
Five tier Bs.
Didn't you say all tier Bs were going to tier A?
Tier B's going away, right? Essentially.
Yeah, tier Bs no, but there's five. Some of our setbacks, I've had some municipalities say, that's okay. What am I going to do? I'm not going to fight City Hall and, or State House.
I mean, most of the stuff is doable. It's just more paperwork. It's going to be, you know, more, more-
It's ours. The problem is, for example, the street sweeper-
The street sweeper's the, that's the biggest thing. Yeah.
Well, that's amortized over 10 years. So it's 30 grain a year. It's going to be another body, at least a body higher than the DPW.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's way more than the cost of the street sweeper.
Yeah.
Yeah. And since I've been, I went to this meeting with Hard, with Hardwick and their mayor to talk to DEP about it. And the guy who, you know, who's signing the front page of the regulation here at DEP was at that meeting. You know, things like the street sweeper and, and may this, but this is, this is their stance. Well, then aggregate that amongst the municipalities and buy a street sweeper and you all share service. You guys have one.
That's insane. Cause what you're, what you just said was that everything that we have, every road we have fits the bill for four times a year worth of service. I mean-
That's a lot of wear and tear on a street sweeper.
Yeah, that's it.
I think it'll be in the shop.
But every, I would invest in a street sweeper myself.
But, but every, every municipality is not going to be in position to buy a full-blown street sweeper.
No.
We've had these, I've already had these discussions with Christine and Eric this week. And, you know, there, there's ways to do it, but it's going to, it's just, it's still super costly to us. It, it's going to add a body to the whole, the whole thing, no matter what happens and the cost of the equipment and maintenance.
It's just another way that the state is-
And, and paying you guys more to do the reporting.
How often, how often does that report have to be generated?
Once a year.
Once a year.
So the submission, once a year, we have to update the stormwater pollution prevention plan along with that once a year. But right now, we don't have to do a stormwater pollution prevention.
Right.
So now we have to pull it together. That has to be updated once a year.
Right. But that's not, that's not a hundred dollar deal. That's like, that's a real, that's a real project for you guys.
Yeah.
You know, normally when the DEP gives us an obligation, it's not an obligation that they give us with a three-month lead time. They generally give us that obligation.
It's real 11th hour stuff.
Yeah. You know, like a year or more in advance so that we can be compliant and, and still manage that into our budget. This is insane.
So I don't know. The, the message I got from DEP was kind of, I get your, you don't want to go to the tier A. That's not going to, I don't really think that's realistic. It's going to change. But what could change is some of the things that are upgraded here. You know, and timeframes, if those aren't agreeable, those are very much in play. So we look at it and say, and, and some of the things that they said to us were, if you think, you know, we can't enforce some of the stuff in the first year because the budget's already finalized and, and it's too late. So give me, give me 12 months to make some of that stuff effective. There's also been a big complaint about having to street sweep roads that don't have inlets. Because municipalities said, look, they, you know, they've argued that that's okay. And DEP said, okay, I think we're complying to probably agree with you. So that may go away. So those are some things that aren't new to the tier A permitting that there, that are very much in play.
Anyone, anyone who's ever helped clean up a road, like we do these, you know-
Street cleaning.
Yeah, we walk around.
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, you know that a street sweeper is not going to really clean what need, all the, the refuse is in the side of the road. It's all off in the, the surface of the road, spinning a brush down it and vacuuming it is, it's window dressing.
It actually, in some cases, has caused problems because we have citizens who had water backup from those areas because of the amount of junk that falls into those things. So if you're using a street sweeper, that's going to just push it.
Our street sweeper doesn't vacuum either.
Oh, no.
That's why it's so expensive. We need, we need a serious-
That's the big deal. Yeah, we need something.
Serious capacity to vacuum.
Ours just kind of-
Yeah, tosses it. Yeah.
Blows it around. So, okay, well.
Geez, thanks Dennis.
I'm just kind of thinking of the big tech items, like storm, all storm drain structures. This is new to all municipalities. All storm drain structures are going to need to be retrofitted up to the current standard. So if we have old inlets-
I think we've done quite a few of them, haven't we?
But there's, it's going to be-
Yeah, there's a lot more, but we-
Because all tier A municipalities, I think it's just tier A. You know, as you repave roads, you upgrade that, which I think we still did too.
Yep. And they're expensive.
Yeah.
Storm drains are expensive.
Absolutely.
So anything that's not done now. But there's, that says 59 months. So there, there's time.
Okay.
And DEP is also going to be putting a grant out for this. To all the municipalities that are going from tier B to tier A, they're going to have a grant.
What, in what dollar amount? Do, do we know yet?
We don't know. They indicated to us that it will, it'll be consistent amongst all municipalities. So no municipality's getting any different. They were saying, I think last time they went and put out about $70,000 and they thought this would be equitable. So. But that's, that's going to handle the first blow.
Yeah. Might pay for the storm drain upgrades.
Employee wages.
Okay. The good news you have for us. It's, we can jump ahead. It's, it's coming up, but I, the Polina Dam inspection.
Oh yes. That's, the inspection's complete. If I, if I, you guys have a form, I will get that on DEP.
Yep. That's the good news. I needed to balance it out. That's the good news you bring.
The rest is just-
It's good news that we spent thousands of dollars to affect a dam we're going to tear down.
And this is, this is, this is the state, folks.
That's actually the stupidity of government.
We're actually happy about holding the, holding the state off for another year. And the DEP owes money to take the dam down. And that's why the dam's still standing because the DEP hasn't paid the money they promised. So it's-
Get rid of it.
It's one real evil cycle that you go through. Thank you, Dennis.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief, corporal?
Oh, we don't bring bad news.
That's good.
We're kind of used to it at this point.
That's a first.
Yeah.
If you move the, you have a thumb drive, right?
Yeah.
If you just plug it in and move the mouse, it should light up.
Corporal, I saw your dad at the truck raffle in Nolton.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. It's hard to miss.
Yeah. I was kind of telling chief back there, listen to your, the street sweeper thing. No, that's my place. But in my town, we hire a company out. So we used to have a street sweeper. Maintenance was insane. Insane. Like manpower. Have all the trucks, chase the sweeper around. And it took an abundance of time. They hired a company out. Comes with two trucks. They do like the whole town in two days.
Really? That might be an answer. Where, where do you live?
Franklin.
Really? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
It's good for thought.
Yeah.
It's good for thought. We'll do anything. Thank you.
But it's expensive. It sucks.
And manpower. It's, it's hiring somebody else and it benefits and everything. It's, it's a lot. I would do it too. I, I've always wanted to drive a street sweeper.
Sorry, you have no free time. I'll do it on the weekend. You don't have any free time either.
As long as it's got a radio.
It's true. Is it working?
It is.
Do you need me to do anything?
Do you want to do the bottom portion?
That's what I'm asking.
What do you want me to do? All right. So if anybody can hear me?
Oh, we can hear.
I created this program called Blairstown SARS. It's from our local police department right here that we can send. So bringing it from the slide, Blairstown Police Department created, that's all good.
You had one job. You had one job. The spacebar.
Can you see that, Walter?
So what happened was we created this program called SARS program because I went through a call. Call originated as a found child. Kind of weird. Then we reported a missing kid, but a little girl showed up at somebody's house.
Wow.
We got there, little girl didn't know her mom's phone number. She didn't know where she was really from. She wasn't from the area. Heard her brother chased, what they said, a dog into the woods. They got lost, turned around. They started crying for help. You know, the residents lived at this house, went back in the woods and found the child. She, you know, she brings her in the house, everything else calls us. We get there. Now it's where this kid come from. So I mean, as a parent, my biggest fear, and it's the worst thing. Silver lining, we did find the parents. Earth knows all good, happy story. But while I was there, the mother who had children of her own, she said, I have an autistic son. Do you guys have anything? She's like, I asked state police, you know, the best kind of programs or anything like that, like Project Lifesaver. And I felt horrible. I told her, no, we don't have anything. And just like the look on her face was just distraught, like upset. And I'm familiar with Project Lifesaver from Union County. That's where I go to KI training. They have Project Lifesaver. It's a great thing. But it's on the county and like anything.
Budget.
It's a money thing. So it's almost like, almost like a tracker bracelet. They can put on a child or a adult with special needs. It's good if you're in a city, you know, you're able to drive around in a general area and it pings. It's also somber. And as you get closer, the ping gets louder. We're out there in the woods. Let's face it. Like you can't drive or get to where we need to, as it is. So after talking to that mother, I came back in headquarters and they, they almost got me up at night. Like I felt bad. We don't have anything. I know the county wasn't going to do anything. Same thing with manpower at the sheriff's office. So I was like, what, what can we do? I mean, as a police department, local, we should give back, you know, to our people. It doesn't profit. So my next slide is how we fix it. So creating a detailed profile that every officer within the Blairstown Police Department will have access to. If a missing child or a adult with special needs goes missing, in this profile, it will be a yearly updated picture that designated officer or start, assigned to the SARS program will meet with and take their picture annually and make it a positive interaction. So say we create a roster and every year, you know, almost like a annual thing, we go there. Hey, what's up? How are you doing? Make a positive interaction. So this way they have a lot more contact with us, police officers. They get familiarized with us and get familiarized with them. You know, maybe bring stuffed animal, something, maybe a positive thing. Everybody's happy.
Bring the dog.
Yeah, of course. So with that too, I mean, it's going to be their address, a parent, guardian, anybody's phone number who's important that we can call and get ahold of. Detailed outline of their special needs, whether they need to be non-verbal, death, other kind of emotional behaviors, things that we may think are totally out of the norm, but it is their normal capability. Also in that, or in this profile, I will show you like an aerial map, almost like Google Earth, just detailing out other places of interest, bodies of water, you know, parents number, kids like to go and hide. For us, it's like taking a straw. Also things that may help the officer communicate with the child, you know, if they are, that they only know sign language, different kind of like emotional gestures, things of that nature. Speedy recovery. Some possible examples are when we receive a call from dispatch, dispatcher gives us all the information that she knows. Parent pulls up, my kid's missing. They're not going to give us what we need. I mean, it's, it's a tragic thing. So as we're going there, if we have this profile, it'll queue the officer to lay here, missing child, could be attached with special needs. Our computers, our car, we have a break program. Do you want to speak to them? No, I just totally forgot what the- Power DMS? Power DMS. So with power DMS, you can just type, you know, if you have the kid's address, their name, any kind of key for it, you can hit it, you go right to that profile. In that profile, there's going to be a picture, all the child's information, his full name, where he likes to go, anything you need right at your fingertips, rather than driving all the way to the house, being a little upset mom or dad or whoever. Also for us, putting out a poll out, rather than try and get information and, you know, how many people are involved in someone, try to get, you know, hey, what did you say it was? And then us relate to one another. One person, they can get right on the phone with their dispatch, hey, put a poll out. This is what it is. This is who they are. And then also, I can't tell you how many times like driving somewhere to look for someone, you may pass the guy, but you don't know. It's just, it's either walking and they're not, they're running from you. You're just like, oh, there's somebody. And then you get to the house and you find out, oh, it was the guy with the red shirt. He's down the road. Who knows where he is now?
Speed of information.
Yeah. And also too, like if we call for search and rescue, rather than us trying to give search and rescue, like bits and pieces, nobody can tell them like exactly everything. And then say if, you know, the officer who got there first, he starts going off into the woods to look, at least any other officer there, they have all the information on it, even if they're coming late to the call. Also with a picture, with a parent's consent, we have their picture. Facebook. It's a powerful thing. It reaches a lot of people. I can call Chief Johnson. He's home. Thank you. But hey, can you go on our Facebook page? Give us, yeah, this is what we have. Here's the picture. It's on the power DMS. Pull up and you can put it right online, rather than us coming all the way back to the station, trying to, you know, take a picture of a picture of somebody's phone or anything like that. It's just, really it's just speeding everything up. So many times of the essence of these kind of matters. So donor resources, search and rescue, our department's KI, and also I have a large array of other KI handlers. Really, if one KI handler calls somebody else to the ref, we can get a team power. Outside police agencies, you know, state police, anybody local, our tactical response team, that's from our county. They actually will come out and do help us do a grid search. They're very thorough. Our department's social media platform, also reverse on the loan, our township fire department, everyone's going to come out and help. And then also just maps.
Do we have a drone? Does our department have a drone?
A drone.
A drone?
Yeah. So that actually becomes-
Very good piece to have.
It is, but it becomes more complicated when it becomes commercial. So I'd actually have to send somebody to some sort of licensing or piloting school. And then we actually have to get certified.
Yeah.
It's more, it's more intensive.
Especially like, you know, up by, by Yards Creek and things like that, like that area, you know?
Yeah. I mean, typically right now, we use the state police helicopter.
Okay.
They have this whole clear, which is like infrared and they'll come up with stuff like that. But I mean, a drone in our hands would be helpful, but I mean, you'd have to buy a commercial drone. We'd have to have some of that trans license, which I wouldn't want to do if you were like that. I'll look more into it. So just sort of like the general idea. Yeah, this is obviously our police headquarters, for example, like it's going to be in- Yeah, this is obviously our police headquarters, for example, like it's going to be the child's or adult's residence. But right here, like family friend number 19. So, this way we're not going door to door to door, wasting all that time. It's pretty much that. So, that's where he lives, that's where he potentially got. Say they're right here, I mean, you know, people's special needs, they're attracted to water. We live in, you know, there's a lot of ponds that you're like, "Oh, my God, I don't know there's a pond there." You know, so you can Google Earth and really look at the town, you know, layout and everything. So, just got to mark it, but there's a point of interest, there's a body of water, other areas for officers to check, or even people that are coming who are from our town. At least we have something to show them. So, then this way they know geologically what it looks like from above and where things are.
You sort of went through this a couple of years ago, didn't you, or a year and a half ago, maybe, when you were looking for someone?
Yeah, that had a tragic ending, unfortunately. But believe it or not, I mean, we have three group homes in town. And there's a lot more special needs than I think most people realize. So, it's not uncommon. I mean, we get a lot of missing people, whether it be special needs, whether it be dementia. I mean, it's very common for us to get missing people.
So, what age group, Corporal, would this apply to? Would it be all age groups? Would it be limited? Any age? Okay.
Yeah. Well, this is something we want to give back to our residents, you know? But we'll ask, we want to do as best as we can.
I think this is fantastic, honestly.
Something totally good to give back. Right, privacy disclaimer. So, this way, all this information that will be on our Power DMS, on this profile, it's not discoverable by OPRO. All participants in the program will not be shared with other participants in it. Only officers from Blairstown Township Police Department will have access to this. The file is ever needed when pertinent information was administered to other outside police agencies or volunteers to help in the speedy recovery. Obviously, with that, within our department, our officers know, you know, will be trained, will kind of, will can't give out, hold back on, things like that. I don't know why I just, I don't know why I just thought I made Paul's Stars Program. So, I Googled what a star is. And Google definition is, I'm sorry, stationary definition. I may botch some of these words, but a star is an astronomical object conspired of wondrous superoid of plasma held together by its own gravity. The nearest star to Earth is the Sun. Many other stars are visible to the naked eye at night, but their immense distances from Earth make them appear as far as objects of light.
It's a great description.
The Blairstown Township Police Department's definition of star, star is something very special and new to our alike. A star is so beautiful that it must be cared for with extra, extra love and care. The Blairstown Police Department will always go above and beyond for the residents we serve. With this program, we want to give back to our stars and the galaxies. In parentheses, I put their parents. That's why we created the slide program.
Corporal, thank you. Really, thank you very much. It takes effort, you know, it takes, it takes effort for a person to want to go above and beyond to do something. And it's not just to benefit all of us, but to, to do something special for the job that's going to be...
No, I mean, that night at that call, I was here, not myself, so I'm like, "Oh, my God, I got the kids."
Oh, no, it's scary.
This fierce idiot, I'm like, "Thank God, I'm so blessed that my kids are healthy, they're fine." And I couldn't imagine, you know, talking to this woman and just how hard it is for her and this is her biggest fear. I'm like, "I can't not have an answer for this woman."
I'm so proud of you. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Taking the guesswork out of a, out of a very serious situation. And taking, I mean, minutes matter. Minutes, not hours. It's that, if you, the faster you can recover someone, the better. That's amazing. So, really good work. You saw what you need and you, you filled it.
Thank you very much, Corporal.
Our police department is a community police department. People acknowledge that.
So, we did put it on our Facebook page, but I am going to try to go to the schools and see if they can, you know, if they're allowed to send it to some parent and see if, see if they're willing to help. And honestly, I mean, if anybody has more knowledge or give me recommendations, please send me an email or department email, give me a call. If you has anything that I, I'm not a professional in this, but I'm always open to any tips and anything helpful.
They have newsletters, all the schools have newsletters to go out to the parents. If a letter was devised to put out with their newsletter, that we could get these out to the parent, you can put it on, not, well, we don't have Nixle anymore, but put it on that program and, you know, get some of the parents to...
The only complicated thing that we still have to work out is we may eventually approach state police and see if they'd be willing to kind of cooperate with us and work with us a little bit. The problem is a lot of students don't believe in Blairstown.
Okay, that's true.
So, it would be our jurisdiction. And I'm not saying we would turn a child away that wasn't a neighboring town, especially the parents came.
Like Hardwick Elementary, right?
But we may never get that calling, they never know. So, if we work out something with both parents, we might be able to do that. Initially, we had talked about going to the schools and we will approach them, but we want to see if we can work that out. If we can't, then maybe somebody in the child study team could just pass it out to Blairstown residents online.
And if they come here, they have a sign out program.
Maybe we could do something at the Halloween parade.
All right, Walter?
And have like a...
Little table?
...information booth and have the dog there and everything else.
Maybe it's a good idea.
You got all kinds of kids and parents and it's a very perfect idea.
That's actually a really good idea.
And the fall festival.
I'd be willing to help with that.
Yeah. I think that's a fantastic idea. Fantastic idea.
Cool.
Great programs. Any other towns have this or anyone that you know of that?
No, nobody I know of, but honestly, everyone steal it, please.
This is, this to me sounds like everyone should.
Yeah, it's a no brainer. It really is.
If this works out, we could make a reference to other communities.
Not just that, there's so many other things for catch bad people, but...
Yeah, I know.
The people that really shouldn't be, you know, being acknowledged, kind of get put by the wayside.
I think every parent's worst fear, absolute worst fear, is to have a child go missing, seriously, and not be able to know what to do in order to find him.
I'm just thinking right now, loudly I'm a fee, it's just, you know, except by the newsletter at the school, maybe I can make something where it's, where the parents, that's on them, but they can make a profile, so God forbid that ever happens. When we show up, they can scan this piece of paper with a lot of stuff we need on it.
Do you know that, um, the, the place down, Great Adventure, down the shore, down Jackson, did something along those lines? And they did it for a reason because when people went out of Great Adventure and they went to the food parks, like McDonald's and stuff, the kids were running in and out of the McDonald's. They're going to the bathroom, they're running out to the car. The kids went missing, you know, like, you know, they had to worry about kidnapping attempts. They had to worry about, you know, whether or not the kids were fleeing or, you know, got lost. And so, they put together a program at Great Adventure and they shared it with the other restaurants and stores in that area for just that reason.
Even a program like this, I mean, when he came up with it, it was just such an amazing idea. I mean, even as a responding officer, if, you know, you have somebody who's unable to communicate, you can know all of this as you're walking in the door. It literally comes up on work cell phones or computer in the car. So, you'll know if they're nonverbal, if the lights are going to scare them. So, maybe if you pull up to the side of the road, you don't turn your lights on because you don't want them to run from you. There's so much valuable information and the program he came up with, I mean, kind of covers all of that. So, I'll know, I'm looking for John Smith. John Smith likes this, doesn't like this, tends to run towards this area. He's got a friend over here. I mean, before we even talk to the parents, and as he was saying before, I mean, when a parent's missing a child, a lot of the times, I mean, they almost go into a state of shock. They can't even, sometimes they can't even remember their own child's name.
It's true.
They're so upset and scared, where we already know all this. So, we're just showing up to almost comfort them at this point, that we know who he is, we know where he likes to go. We really don't have to tell us anything. We're just going to, you know, we're going to comfort you and we're going to assure you that we're outbuilding everything we possibly can.
It was one last thing, I mean, not to cheese on my boss, but honestly, when I came to him with this idea, he was so open and receptive and anything I needed, he pretty much just said, "Whatever you need, do it, take it, time, whatever." And I mean, that's, that was huge.
That's why he's where he is.
And other departments are trying to bring up other things and they get shut down before it even gets out of their mouth. It's like I said, I appreciate that.
You have Amber Alert, we have Silver Alert, so maybe now we'll have Stars Alert for the state, you know? It's a good spread. I mean, it's really, it's a great program.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Heard of something great.
Thank you.
Hopefully I don't have to use it, but...
Yeah, you hope you don't, but you know what? Your plan is in place. Thank you, Corporal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. May Corporal, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. So, moving on to our public comment portion of the meeting. Does anyone have a public comment? We'll give you five minutes. You had your hand up first.
I did.
You did, yeah. And you came up first, so I'm like, "I'm going to tell you." Just give us your name and address.
My name is Sandy Hall. I live in Leighton, New Jersey. Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee. As you may know, the New Jersey and Pennsylvania chapters of the Sierra Club have issued a proposal to change the designation of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area to a national park and preserve. The proposal is being presented to various groups by John Donahue, former superintendent of the recreation area, in hopes of gathering support for the project. This proposal offers no information on the national park, no information on the size and location of the Lenape Preserve, no information on the location and curating of the Lenape Educational Center. The local Lenape Nation does not support this center. There's no information on plans for infrastructure improvements such as bathrooms and parking lots, no information on funding, no information on visitation mitigation, no information on the potential change in the boundaries of the park, and this list just goes on and on. Sussex and Warren Counties, as well as several municipalities in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, have passed resolutions opposing this proposal until details, such as environmental, agricultural, and economic impact statements and other requested information are available for public review and comment. Congressman Gottheimer, State Senator Oroho, Assemblyman Space and Wirth of New Jersey are in opposition. Congressman Cartwright of Pennsylvania is also in opposition. I'd just like to add that this time, State Senator Oroho has a state resolution in the Environment and Economic, in the Environment and Energy Commission entrenching, and they're going to be voting on that soon. And Assemblyman Wirth and Space will also be following in the assembly with AR-157. Since February of this year, over 3,800 people have joined our Facebook page to receive and share information. Our website, knownationalpark.org, has hundreds of hits every week. The Sierra Club's proposal has not changed, while the overwhelming increase to oppose has grown significantly. I have copies of the proposal and other information for each of the council members, and I hope you will read the material and consider passing a resolution in opposition of this proposed change. I'd also like to add that in the very beginning in January, Warren County did support this proposal. We challenged their reasoning for this and they rescinded their support of the proposal after reviewing some of the questions that we had. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions or comments.
Amazing.
I'm aware of that change, that flip-flop, which, you know, sorry it ever, it ever went one way.
They got caught short. Yes, they did, sir.
Yeah, but I don't speak for all of us, but I'm in agreement with you.
We can do that.
I think we can easily do that, yeah. It affects our town, it affects your beautiful town.
It affects everybody, Sussex and Warren Counties, both sides of the river. We also have the endorsement of the Delaware River Keepers Network, the NJOA, which represents 1.2 million people. And we are currently now actively lobbying, if you will, for lack of a better term, these state senators and assemblymen to pass these state resolutions opposing this. My hope, our hope, is that we can get this thing stopped before it gets to Congress. If it gets to Congress and if it becomes legislation, everything in this proposal can go right out the window because it falls under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service. And as we know, they have enough problems right now handling what they have and expanding those problems and those issues, even with extra funding, there's no guarantee you're going to get it. Could be an environmental nightmare. Our main goal here is for transparency. We want to protect the Delaware River. And that's pretty much where we're coming from.
What was their incentive? I'm sorry, why did they do this?
Well, this is the interesting part. So, this proposal has been authored by John Donahue, who was a former park superintendent. When he was park superintendent, he authored a document called Vision 2030, which is what he thought should happen here. He's since retired from the National Park Service and has set up the Environmental Consulting Company up in Milford-Dengmans Ferry area. In the first paragraph of this proposal, he thinks we should have this because it's prestige. I don't see any economic benefit to this. He'll tout in this proposal, New River Gorge in West Virginia. I spoke to the mayor of New River Gorge, who said to me quite frankly, "Don't let this happen to you." Yes, they had a great economic boom, 600,000 new visitors to that area. Their infrastructure is being demolished. The National Park Service right now is tearing down 52 historical buildings. So, I think that Mr. Don...
So, be careful what you wish for, if you get...
You're damn right. Yes, ma'am. That's absolutely it. So, if anyone, and I've said this before, if anyone can find one benefit for, for anyone, have at it, we see no benefit here. And we want to get this thing stopped before, quite frankly, we have more eminent domain. We've all suffered through that with toxil and we don't want that to happen again. So, that's where we are.
Thank you. Excellent letter. Thank you very much.
Is my email, you need the sample that you have?
I have a packet for everybody here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, really.
I wish, I wish we were in a position to, to have, to effect a little more change up there. Your nearby, your nearby, I'm old enough to know your nearby village of Beavins should be returned to that name.
Thank you, sir. I live in the ladies, so yeah, I'm right with you on that. I'm assuming you're...
Sussex County, born and raised, yeah, I got it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next?
Bob.
Come on up, Bob.
Good evening.
You done it.
Yes.
Bob Law, 32 Cobblewood Road, representing Blairstown Rotary. How are you tonight?
I'm all right.
How are you?
Two things. First of all, an update on the community center. We are about to start moving forward there. We've got the first permits we need from the building department. And we are about to start the first phase of the project, which will be to install the handicap lift, the wheelchair lift. So, we'll be removing the existing stairs, putting in a pad, putting in some electrical. And the lift will be installed. We expect to be able to start this within the next two to three weeks, depending on contractors and that sort of thing. Once that's done, then we'll be able to start moving forward, removing the existing ramp that's there and begin doing the work on the outside of the building. But things are moving forward. We've, the lift and all is on order. Contractor and the architect are going to be meeting there in the next couple of days to go over some detailed things that need to be done. And, you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes. Weather, supplies, all that stuff will, you know, determine the exact schedule, but our hope is to have the outside siding and all, all that work done. And certainly the safets and the drains and all, which are important before the winter sets in.
Just sounds nice hearing the words "community center" come out of your mouth.
Yep, working on it.
Yeah, that's great.
Second thing is the Halloween parade. I just wanted to verify that we're all on board, and, you know, we'll continue the tradition. Rotary's ready to go. We've got, you know, everything lined up, and with your okay, we'll start working on the paperwork, get it to Christine, and we'll get things moving there.
Tradition is tradition.
What's the date? The date?
October 31st.
31st, right, on Halloween.
On Halloween.
On Halloween.
Wow, that's a rare treat.
All right. So, if there's no issues, we'll get all that stuff going, and we'll be ready to go on that. And I'll contact Chief Johnson. I think that would be a great time to, you know, have some sort of an information booth about that new program.
That was a great recommendation, seriously.
You've got a lot of kids, a lot of parents.
Mm-hmm. I agree. That's a great recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Regarding the Given's belay, is there going to be access to use the room? We have several organizations that use that meeting room.
The only thing, for a period of time, everybody will have to use the ramp.
But there is a way to get in.
All right, or they can come in through the basement entrance. So, the existing stairs which come off of the right side of the landing that's there, those are going to be removed, and a pad will be built, and that's where the lift is going to go. So, for probably two weeks, it'll take them to get all that work done, you'll have to go up the ramp to get in, but there'll be no.
As opposed to walking the stairs.
Yeah. Okay, as long as there's access. Okay. If you can just let us know when that's happening, so we can let those organizations just have a heads up. I mean, they can get in, but, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send you a note, and we're in constant touch with the American Legion, so they know what's going on, so.
Perfect.
You know, in terms of them getting in and out.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. Any other public comment before we close the? Come on up.
My name's Charlie. Can you hear me? My name's Charlie Vitale. I live at 96 Mount Vernon Road. Past couple of years, we moved in in July of 2021, and I was just reviewing the last taxes, tax bill. I very rarely complain about taxes. I understand prices go up all the time. And I just did a spreadsheet of the various components of the tax bill, and all of them are less than 10% increases. Some of them were zero, and one went down 19. However, the municipal tax between '20 and '21 went to 65% increase, and between '22 and '21 was a 153% increase. Was there a grant that was dissolved or some extraordinary cost that came up? You know, if you don't have that answer tonight.
We do. Would you like to take it, or would you like?
No, go ahead. Take a stab at it, Mayor.
I'll take a stab at it. All right. So, what we had was a lot of capital expenses. We had a fire truck that we required a pump for $640,000. We had a considerable amount of debt as well. And we were sitting at nine cents?
9.9 cents.
9.9 cents. If we went above that, we would be subject to a cap each year, a 2% cap. In order to, we kind of bundled everything together.
Debt.
Yeah. The debt, the fire truck, all these other, you know, expenses that we knew we were going to incur. We took advantage of historically low interest rates. We got a 2.11, I believe.
Maybe less.
Yeah, a little over, little over 2%. And in order to not be subject to that 2% cap, if we did that, we wouldn't have been able to repay that bond. We're going to have all of that gone. It's almost $7 million, I believe. We'll have all of that gone in 10 years. That'll be paid off. The municipal tax still is less than 10% of the bill.
Oh, I know that. I mean, it's. It was the.
It's a jump. It's a jump that everybody noticed. But, you know, it's still a jump on a small number. We're still at one of the lowest municipal tax rates in the county, certainly one of the lowest in the state. So, to really take our 10-year plan from our fire department, from our DPW, our own needs, our roads, everything that we had in mind to keep us really kind of stable for the next 10 years, that was really the best way to do it, and to take advantage of those interest rates before they started going up. And they did, about a week after we did that. And also, because of that, because of that, you know, little higher income that we'll have, we can pretty much guarantee that that municipal tax will not go up for at least five years. So, we kind of, it was a shock to a lot of people, but we all thought it was really, absolutely, in our best interest of the town for today and for 10 years to come, you know.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, I have just one other question.
Absolutely.
Please do my subject. As I said, I live on Mount Vernon Road. There's a situation on another property on Mount Vernon Road. I want to give the address unless it's public knowledge, where there's been some material that was placed.
We've had many discussions on that here.
You had gentlemen here that reports, that keeps track of that.
Exactly.
Not the gentleman who did it, but.
Yeah, but you're not the first one to talk about it, so we all know what you're talking about.
All right. I'm just curious where I could find the latest information.
The gentleman.
Mr. Suck.
Mike Suck, he's a neighbor of yours up there.
He's on Axan.
Yeah, he has been on this from day one. Unfortunately, no one was on it from day, day one, or it wouldn't have happened in the first place, but he's really been a great asset. He's.
But the DEP has done test holes.
Yeah.
There's a report that's due right around now, or maybe like a couple of weeks ago.
So, we'll have public information.
The DEP, oh, yeah, yeah, and you may have to Oprah some stuff, and we're going to probably have to do it too, but Mike will do it. Mike Suck will do that. He'll Oprah whatever information. We have a good rapport with the DEP rep that's handling it. There's, and our engineering firms working with the engineers who the DEP bring in as, I forget what they call those guys, but they're the remediation guys for the, they're working for the.
Right, LSRP.
Property owner. LSAT guys, that's it. So, we're on top of it.
It's traveling at the state's pace.
No, I see.
But they have.
It's not being lost.
No, with pressure from us, with pressure from residents, they've gone from doing six-inch test pits to going all the way down to virgin soil.
Oh, okay, because I'd heard that they had done shallow test pits, so they have done.
They've done, they did 26 holes the last time, down to virgin soil.
Yeah, enough noise was made.
There's a lot of fill there. There's a lot, they put a lot of, there's a lot of material there.
I moved in after it went in, but when Tony told me about it, I checked. I could see the topography. I could see that there's a lot of fill.
It used to be a hill, and then it turned into a flat surface, but no, they, nothing is being, nothing's being overlooked, and certainly we're, as they give us new information, new results, we find out about it.
We have an ordinance, we have a soil placement ordinance. It's pretty strong. If you don't go for the site plan, ultimately, we could require all the material be taken out, which would be the, that's what Mike Suck is recommending being done. I mean, there were 500 truckloads, 600 truckloads. We didn't pick up on it because it was, now I wasn't here, thank goodness, but Yards Creek was doing some things at the same time, so trucks were going to Yards Creek, and nobody, it just.
Everyone assumed.
Everyone's assuming all that dirt's going to Yards Creek, or all the trucks are going to Yards Creek. Very, very.
And they also traveled at night. There's a lot of stuff going in and out at night.
About at night.
The only thing I noticed was that there was definitely a lot of mud on that road coming out of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Normally, if you see a permitted operation, they make them clean the road, and that's like almost your first tip-off.
You also got tracking mats and all that.
Tracking pads, correct.
So, I know what you're supposed to do, but that's.
That's correct.
But it's very unsafe when there was some mud on that.
Mr. Suck is taking names, actually, and he's putting out information to residents, so if you can reach out to him, I'm sure he would include.
I can actually get his email address.
You know what? When you mentioned that name, I heard it from somebody else. Somebody else has been telling, keeping me, but I want to know where the township was.
And by the way, Charlie, talking about the budget a little bit, you know, we've been very aggressive in our road overlay program. Mount Vernon's getting done in September, from the highest, from right around that point, not all the way to Walla Valley this year, but from that high point all the way down, down to Buchanan. So, just so you know, that's in the works too, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll move to close the public comment section and move on to meeting minutes. We have two minutes.
Department reports.
We're, oh, I've skipped right over them because we're going to, we'll probably cover them at the end of the meeting, so can we have a motion?
Mayor, I would move, I would move to approve the minutes. I mean, the, or the department.
Exactly. I was going to ask for a motion.
Sorry, I was delayed.
Do we have a second to approve those department head reports?
Exactly.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And we'll have varying reports in folks' respective comments at the end. Meeting minutes, we have two to approve, June 8th, 2022, and July 20th, 2022. We have a motion to approve those meeting minutes. Any discussion on them?
Let's make the motion first. I'll move it for approval, Mayor.
Give a second.
Any discussion on those minutes?
Just on one of the minutes, I just want to bring something up. We had, there was a discussion, and this is good that we get the minutes to look over.
I try to do it as best as I can.
And the animal control is requesting that the dog at large summons can be increased from $50.
It's actually in the attorney's report.
Yep.
Oh, yes.
Good. Right on topic. Good job.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving those meeting minutes?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. All right, we have an ordinance tonight for a public hearing and adoption, that is 2022-08, an ordinance repealing Chapter 132 of the Code of the Township of Blairstown to be entitled Maintenance of Vacant and Abandoned Properties, replacing with a new Chapter 132 entitled Registration and Maintenance of Certain Real Property by Mortgages. We have any discussion on this before we open it to public?
I just, you know, whenever an ordinance is put in place, you always have to make sure that there's guidance, or who's going to be maintaining, who's going to do this, who's going to do that, who's going to be watching this, who's going to maintain this? And this is, this is a lot of work that's going to have to be done over here. Who's going to find out?
A lot of municipalities at this point, it can be a lot of work the way that the state set it up, and, but again, this was a mandatory revision. This wasn't our idea, or certainly not mine. But the whole registry concept and everything, that would be a burden on your clerk, obviously the summon officer would continue to have involvement. The only thing I can say about that is I do know that down the late, the last couple of years, there's been companies that are offering to do all that, and what they'll do is like if there's a $500 registration fee that a mortgage has to pay, they might take 10% of that $50 or something, so it's no cost to you guys, but they do all the paperwork and then monitoring. It could be, it could be a lot. I don't necessarily rely on that, Joanne, but that, this was foisted on us by Trent.
The thing that you're really going to have to be careful about, because I worked for Fannie Mae for five years with these properties, and the banks don't always, they may go, start to go into foreclosure, but they may not, the people may still be there, they may not be there. If their stuff is there, the bank doesn't allow you to go in. I mean, there's a lot there that you have to really be careful about when you're checking these out.
Chris, you're probably already getting notices of foreclosure now from lenders.
We do get notices.
But that's, the notice of foreclosure is nothing. That doesn't mean.
But what that, that is supposed to trigger our registry and then us chasing them down.
It's, we're kind of doing it now.
How much difference is it from what we're doing now, though?
Wait, oh, it's a big difference. It's a big difference.
Well, in what way?
Here's a scenario, okay? You get a, you get a notice of a foreclosure. People are still there.
Absolutely.
Okay? Who's going to keep checking to find out if they're there, if they've left? You know, the electric isn't always turned off immediately. People don't maintain their properties whether they're there or not, sometimes in foreclosure. I think it's a big, this can be a big burden. I don't think anybody really realizes the.
Right now, David Deal, isn't David going out to those properties?
David Deal will go visit the properties when we get the foreclosure list. How often he goes and checks on it, I do not know. I have the answer for that.
The other thing, Kevin, in light of this one too, is there are, you know, everybody takes a lot of pride in their homes around here. So, if you have a house that is in foreclosure and the people are still there, we should have an ordinance on here that, or even if the people aren't there and it's not in foreclosure yet, okay? Because people get scared. As soon as they get a notice from the bank, you're default, you know, we're going to come after you, they take off. A lot of times, they'll take off. I just want to know if there's another way, other than when the bank and nobody is there to collect the fee.
Our whole ordinance actually that we're repealing was not only lenders, but it also covers.
Yes. Correct.
They specifically took that out, the legislation.
Right.
We're not allowed to do that under this type of ordinance.
Okay.
But as I indicated when we introduced it, we still do have some other tools. We have a brush grasp, we have the ordinance, we have, I mean, if you really get a dilapidated structure through our construction official, we can issue unsafe structure. And so, there are things we can do, but you're absolutely right, Joanne. This is more restricted than what we used to be able to do. The fees are less, and this registry could be a bit more burdensome. I mean, I would much prefer to just keep what we had. I would also note, by the way, that we can't have as many, I may have just said that, we can't get as many fees as we used to get. The amounts are less. So, all in all, I'd much rather just keep the ordinance on the books that we have, that we're not allowed to.
Well, is there another ordinance that we can't put on? Because when there's a vacant home.
No, actually, there is.
That's in disrepair, and it's in a neighborhood, and nobody's doing anything about it.
It creates a negative impact for the neighborhood. It creates a deficit for the immediate neighbors.
Well, we certainly have, I mean, in some areas, we have a pretty comprehensive property maintenance ordinance, et cetera, apart from this. I'll look through our code book.
Okay. I appreciate that.
If I see something, I'll send you guys some samples.
Okay.
We can maybe tackle that, yeah.
Okay.
But zoning has cited people, I mean, you guys have seen the paperwork.
Yes.
Zoning cites people all the time for these, people who have nuisances and overgrown yards and things of that nature. They're doing that. Zoning does that. I don't know how much teeth it has.
They can only do it for the yard, though, right now.
No, yeah.
Just for the grass.
You're not talking like the barn is falling down, or the decking in the back of the They're doing that, zoning does that.
Yeah.
I don't know how much teeth it has.
They can only do it for the yard though, right now.
No, yeah.
Just for the grass.
You're not talking like the barn is falling down or the decking in the back of the house is falling off the back.
Or something's left.
Or the boxes, there's tons of boxes. Like I've seen, you can drive by a couple houses and see nothing but, it looks like the house is vacant, yet there's somebody living there. And it's a cohortor situation. The exterior of the house is filled with boxes and untrimmed lawns. Okay, I would like to see some, thank you.
All right, so with this ordinance, I'll open it to the public now. Do we have any public comment on 22, 2022-08? Okay?
I'll move, we close the public portion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's have a, do a roll call.
Motion for adoption, please.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Nate, motion for adoption.
Second.
There you go.
There you go.
I would just note, by the way, that I did make some, the few revisions that are, so that David didn't want, so that they were all in there, we'll break up when we, when we publish this.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Macintyre?
Yes.
Mr. Orcot?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bakkenberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Morehead?
Yes. Onto 2022-10, an ordinance to purchase tires for the township fire truck and provide for funding thereof.
Several quotes on that? Or just one quote? Do you know?
I am not sure about that.
I thought it was under, where we didn't have to do that.
No.
I mean, Christine, you're not talking about that.
Why do you have to get, go out to bid or something else?
Yeah.
I always like to see a couple of quotes, because I, in the past, when we brought that up, we were able to save quite a bit of money.
Christine would be the first one to tell you we need to get something, but I don't, I don't have the answer for you on this.
Christine's our qualified purchasing agent.
Yeah.
But normally, normally the fire department, if it's for the fire trucks, they would go out and get the quotes.
Thankfully, we have a pretty responsible fire company. Those guys are trying to save money any way they can. I would assume they did their due diligence on purchasing the tires at a good price.
Under with the air packs.
Yeah, well thankfully, we got a, they have a purchase plan in place now for those. So.
Is this a public hearing?
No.
We have to open it up publicly.
This is, that's also a public hearing. This is adoption as well for this?
Yes.
Okay.
They're both, oh, obviously, they're both, okay.
All right. So yeah, we'll open that up to any, any public discussion?
Yeah.
On ordinance 2022-10?
We did it last week. It's the second week.
Actually.
This is the second week.
Yeah, yeah. All right, seeing no.
If it's, I mean, there would be bids on it already. It was. It's not.
Right, it's not.
No, it's.
It's not.
This is just quoted. It doesn't have to go out to bid.
It's eight tires, by the way.
Four thousand five hundred.
Two, four, eight, maybe.
They're big tires.
Is it ten tires? Is it dual wheel?
I think it's a.
Dual axle?
Yeah.
Dual wheel? And the front tires? I think it's ten tires.
Yep. And the tires, I should say, they've.
From 2008.
Yeah, the tires they're using are way out of date. They, every tire has a date code on it and they are way out of date. I, I feel very, very nervous about those guys responding on tires that old. All right, seeing no public comment, we have a motion, movement to close public session?
First one. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. All right, let's, let's vote to, the motion, you see, I'm, I'm way ahead, actually. I'm thinking of something else right now.
I'm sitting there, Mayor.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's, it's been a, it's been a long week. A, can we have a motion to?
Approve the purchase.
Approve the 2022-10?
Second.
Roll call, please, Kristen.
Mr. Macintyre?
Yes.
Mr. Orcot?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bakkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Morehead?
Yes. All right. Our consent agenda tonight, we've got four items. 2022-95, refund of 2022 overpayment. 2022-96, cancellation and refund of taxes due to a totally disabled veteran status. 2022-97, hiring of a crossing guard. 2022-98, resolution approving vouchers and claims. Any discussion on any of those consent agenda items?
No.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please, Kristen?
Mr. Macintyre?
Yes.
Mr. Orcot?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bakkenberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Morehead?
Yes. Onto unfinished business, water filtration bid specs. This has been going back and forth for a few weeks now, probably a couple of months now.
Excuse me, Mayor, did we, did we miss something? I saw Kevin's report.
We missed something.
Did we miss something?
We missed something, yes.
So they think we're talking, Dave thinks we're talking about downtown and we're talking about bid specs for the water plant.
No, he knows. Dave knows.
That's not what we're saying.
Not for the third, not for the new one.
No.
It's not, when I talked to Dave about China water, it was well number one.
Right, which is on the agenda for something totally.
Well, number one is the one at Bull Island.
Yes.
What did you say?
Something about Magenite for bid specs for months on well number one? And then a bar in that?
No.
Or is that, maybe he was talking passive.
No, we've been going back and forth, waiting for bid specs on that. He's been asked about that. And now you're, what you got from him is that we don't need to go to bid for any of
Well, I told you that, man, once I figure out what we got to doing, the whole concept of spec, spec, spec. Now, as we discussed, we were discussing briefly, Mayor, before the meeting, we don't, we don't have to bid for this, even if it's over the bid threshold with our, for the third purchasing, because that's a specific exception to the public bid law, the city repairs amendment or repairs, maintenance, improvements to water supply systems that we operate. So we don't have to bid, we don't have to get a spec, we don't have to go through all that, that delay. What they told me basically is you still need to get probably some type of a plan, design, or spec, if it's a filtration system, so that, and then TWA, the E P. But apparently Al's now giving him, giving him that data, this is well one, I suppose, now.
Yeah.
He's reached out to a company that he's previously worked with in Manchelle.
Addage.
And I think he told you the same thing, because we spoke about the same.
Company's addage or something.
And hopefully, we're going to have, you guys will have an answer to that very quickly. Once we have it, if you guys are comfortable, we could go straight to contract with somebody and just.
We really have to, we're, we're at a.
Yeah, I know you got.
Yeah, we're, we're at the tipping point.
That's all I'm trying to let you know, it looks like it's in action and we don't have to bid it at the end or for later.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Great.
That's really news to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been on there since the beginning of the year, I feel.
It doesn't apply to this group, it doesn't apply to anything you did to that well, that your water supply system as well.
Capital improvements.
Yeah. Even maintenance, you may even get an expensive maintenance, specifically example.
Well, for example, the well pump went bad on well number one this week, last week, and it's a big deal, it's like 23 grand or something.
Yeah, no, totally took it offline, where that well is down.
We were operating just on well number two, which is, it's working fine, but there's a reason, well, we've worked on well number one by itself forever, and there's a reason, though, that the state requires us to have two wells, a backup well, so.
You can treat that as a burden, of course.
Yeah, of course, right.
Okay.
That's good news.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that done.
Accommodating it without the other one, huh? Because they were saying it wouldn't do it.
Yeah, I'll say on top of Dave, I, I work with their office and join up with them together, hoping to get that accelerated.
I'd really appreciate it. I'm tired of seeing this on the agenda, we, you know, there's constant feedback and checking up of, and to see that this thing gets done.
With Dave, Johnny, you were saying, well, we seem like he was, complete miscommunication there, so hopefully you bridge that gap and off.
Okay.
And I told him, I was talking about this, Dave, you guys, since I got here in Chin.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been on the, it's been on the agenda for a while. Thanks, Kevin. Planet Networks installation update, I have that email here. Do we have anything on the building itself here?
Yeah, actually, I did ask him separate, and he said that they ran the data cabling for the new phones on Friday with the exception of the chief's office. And once the configuration of the phone system, they'll, they will then schedule final installation for here.
Very good.
No timeline, though.
Okay.
I saw their cars, their trucks, going around Blairstown.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, they've, they've been all over.
Geisler, Maple Lane, Monhegan.
Mountain Road, and they're on Mountain Road.
Yep. Right now, I'm reading this email from the ninth that these roads have service within the next two weeks, and that was September 9th. East Ab High Street, Bridge Street, Blair Place, Main Street, Water Street, Carhartt Street, Vale Street, Park Street, and a small section of Stillwater Road, and they're going to push up from there, away from Blairstown into, into Hardwick, so they're getting there. We're, we're slowly becoming, getting into the 21st century with the broadband. I, I, I did a speed test on my, my DSL the other day, and it's just, it's the worst that you could possibly think. I don't know how anything in my home runs on the speed that we, that we put up with here, so it's nice to know we'll have a couple of choices. Facility use form update, Kristen?
Due to recent events, we were not able to meet once again, but Kevin's going to be sending me over a new form with some guidance from other municipalities, and we're just going to do a meeting, like with one department head here and there, just to get this done and over with.
All right, yeah.
It's very hard to get us all together at one time.
It is. The affordable housing settlement's still on the agenda.
Yeah. Can we just keep it there? It's going to be dismissed at some point.
Yeah.
I followed with Ashley, it bears share. I think we're pretty much at the point where they're just going to dismiss. Where they're not going to, see, the point is, they, they have to sign off.
Right.
The stipulation dismissal, or I would need to file a motion. Everybody, including Judge Miller, our, our affordable housing, days on, what about the word? Dr. Manis, everybody does, yeah. There's no sense of Blairstown, anyway. So it'll happen. You're not spending any money on it, so.
Do they have a deadline that this has to be compliance by?
They would, the current round stands for.
I thought she was behind.
So some time in the next three months, I'll.
What happens to the employees that are part of it for the town? We have an employee that.
We're on it. We're on it.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing, I just wanted you guys to know, because I did check this, because they kept saying, well, how about a, how about a quasi dismissal, but you still finish up and try to do another market to affordable? And I said, well, let me check, and I did check. You guys only have about 10,000 and change left.
Right.
It's not where close.
No.
You know, your average is about 15, I think, or 50 per unit. So I just hope, I said, we just don't have the money, it doesn't make any sense. So I think once I gave them that information, it'll happen.
Okay.
Probably, maybe soon, by the next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Copier shredder, any?
So, yes, I do have a few updates. I didn't pass it out, because it's just a lot, but I did receive two separate quotes. One was from who we have right now, this is regarding the copier. We have Freedom Business Machines who we use right now, they are Canon. We know them, we're familiar with them. Their highest machine is, buying it outright is $18,000.
Makes copies.
Right. So Mr. Deputy Mayor Orcot provided me information with another company, they do a lot of work in Sussex County. They have a Ky, I can't say this word.
Kyocera?
Thank you. Copier, same, 70 papers per minute, whatever that is, $11,380.81. So that's a $7,000 difference.
Are there clicks and stuff on them now?
What do you mean?
You know, clicks for the ink or?
So the black cartridge is included, if that's what you're asking. I did reach out to some of them, Sussex County townships, they love this machine. We do have to go into a new co-op. Christine said it was not a problem.
Warranty?
There is a warranty, but the, the maintenance agreement goes by how much we use it, and unfortunately, I cannot answer that. And then the, and then, yes, there is a warranty. Our copier is breaking, so I would like to please make a decision if we can.
What does it use? The, the ink or whatever that you have to purchase for, is, what's the difference between the Canon and this one?
Oh, pricing wise? I don't have the answer for that.
Yeah, that makes a big difference.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they're both colored.
Sometimes the lower the cost of the machine, the more the.
They're both colored, so it's going to, either way, cost us some money. We don't have a color, we don't have a color copier as of right now in our, in our building.
The feedback was good from people who use this machine?
Yes.
And $7,000 cheaper?
It is $7,000 cheaper. And I spoke with Christine, and it's pretty simple to join the new co-op, so.
Move forward with that?
Is, is the, the ink and stuff?
As far as the cost of the ink?
Yeah. Like, what is it, yeah, the, how much is it and how is it?
The colored, yeah, so the color, the black ink is included with this one, this color, whatever, I can't say that, the colored ink is not. I don't know about the Canon.
I think at this point, we have, we've been talking about this for like three months, you know?
Can we at least move to join the co-op?
No, let's move to make the purchase. We've been jerking around for months. Kristen's asked us to do this.
Where do we stand with the shredder?
Well, that's going to be next.
Oh.
Yeah, we can just.
Let's get this off the table. Need a motion?
Yep, make it, I'll make it.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve funding for the purchase of a Kyocera, Kyocera copier?
However it's pronounced.
Color copier. Can we have a roll call, please, Kristen? What's the price, what's the price on that?
$11,000.
Yeah, $11,380.81.
Okay.
Do you want to include Walters as part of that motion to join the, to the co-op?
Exactly.
That's part of my motion, Eric.
Okay, I'll make that motion. That's part of my motion. Thank you.
We have a roll call, Kristen.
Mr. Macintyre?
Yes.
Mr. Orcot?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Bakkenberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Morehead?
Yes. All right.
Now the shredder.
Shredder, are we doing a, are we getting a shredder? Are we doing a shredding company?
So, Mr. Macintyre has, he researched and then I still have my shredder.
The only company I talked to that shredded, which I was familiar with, a 64 gallon container, put in the municipal building, it would be locked and secured. They would come and pick it up once a month, empty it, re-lock it, and it came out to about $200 a month.
Is that open to the public or is it strictly for the township?
That's, that's up to us, they don't, they don't really care. They're just giving you a 64 gallon container.
I think it would be filled pretty fast if we opened it to the public. I know I have piles of stuff I could get rid of.
So the shredder that I asked for the last time was, to purchase outright, was $2,234. I did go as far as looking at to see what our paper shredding events were for the $625 per shredding event, which is twice a year. I actually scheduled one, because I didn't know where we were on this. So for the first year, if we decided to go this way, we would be paying $3,484, but then every year after that, we would just be paying the $1,300 for the two shredding events per year.
It's covered by the grant.
Covered by the grant, as is Mr. Macintyre's, which is $200 a month, so that's $2,400 for each year.
Is the shredder itself going to come out of the grant?
Yes, it is.
Oh. Kristen, tell us, preference.
In all honesty, I love Mr. Macintyre's idea as far as maybe doing that for the residents, picking, putting a bin out, just trying it out, but I personally feel that we should, But I personally feel that we should, I like to know that I'm, it's being shredded. And I understand that they're, you know, I want this shredder. I want my shredder. Sorry. Spit it out.
That's the answer.
Yeah, you, you manage the office. It, it really is. Yeah, this is, this is your call, Kristen, really.
I want the shredder.
All right. And the shredder is, is a cheaper route.
Yes.
What is the warranty on the shredder?
Oh, truly.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, what Mr. McAtora said. I do apologize, Deb, I don't have that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
It's not like thirty days, it's like.
No, 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 no.
A second motion. A motion to years. Do you purchase a shredder?
Will it shred colored copies?
Yeah. If the warranty, is there any kind of like extended warranty we could purchase of it? Yeah, on all of the American Freedom areas, yes.
Okay. Because I want to make sure we get that.
Okay.
All right. Want to make that motion?
I'm on roll call. Mr. McAtora, Mr. Orkot, Mrs. Van Valkenburg, Mrs. Waldron, Mayor Morehead.
Yes.
Done.
Thank you.
All right.
Yay, two down, Kristen. Anything else you want?
You want to roll?
Yes, I was gonna say, anything else you want?
Not yet, you know, I'm just kidding.
I'm done.
The, the BEC Fall Festival is coming up October fifteenth.
They actually, the reason why that's on, and I do apologize, they're asking for an amendment to their facility use form. If the weather is nice, they are asking if they can use the parking behind the diner.
The parking where?
Behind the diner.
We said no.
We said no to another one, but I told them.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons we said no was because they had to cross Route ninety-four, and that was an issue. If they are walking behind, that, that to me would be less of a negative impact.
They're walking to the footbridge and across, right.
Exactly.
That was one concern, but the other concern is.
There's no crosswalk. In other words, there was no crosswalk issue. And we didn't have to hire somebody to cross them.
Right.
That was the issue.
No, it was because the cars went in the mud.
Oh, yeah, well, that was, that was issue, that was issue too, right?
No, you don't cross ninety-four to go to the park.
I just said that.
That's what she said.
I just said that.
Yeah. But, and the other issue is if the, if the weather, if we do have some rain beforehand, we can't have cars.
When we're closer.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll work with them and make that determination.
I kind of figured that.
We'll walk the field and do that, just like we did with the, with the diner did in the spring.
Okay.
They've also acquired a really great MC for the day as well.
I understand, Mayor, that they've acquired you.
Yes.
A microphone and a mayor.
Eleven to four.
Imagine that.
It'll be good. It's gonna be fun. Better races, be there. Lead paint, another fun subject.
That's a law, Kevin. I just got off a webinar with the New Jersey Association of Realtors, and they're getting really upset. They said they even contacted the league municipalities to get to all of the municipalities. That went into effect July twenty-second.
Yeah, well, the law was about to then, we have until two thousand twenty-four, actually, to really.
No, you don't. Any, anybody that goes into a rental that was built before seventy-eight has to have that lead certification.
Right, and the landlord has a responsibility to, to do that certification if nobody else does.
That's correct. And then it's our obligation to know.
We're not in the business of subsidizing landlords if we don't have to.
Notification.
You do have to have people on, on call, should they, or names to give.
We need a list of qualified lead remediation.
I know very few of Fannie Mesut's guys that have done much with this yet, and we have, we have had a con, or were responsible. We, we were officially on the, by two thousand twenty-four. But I, I suggest to Kristen is that if we put that little thing up on the website, then hopefully some of our landlords will voluntarily get that certification, which would be nice. I've also reached out, I did initially for Glen Garden Borough, but obviously the next will help all of us. But my question, PCA actually regulates, you know, I think that's three units enough, so I'm trying to find out if PCA is actually going to require lead inspections of those units as part of their green card, everything we do, so trying to see where we can go with that. It's gonna be difficult.
It has to be.
Because technically we're blocking five, the single channeling residential grant law. We have no idea who's doing that.
That's correct.
It's a very, very difficult call.
There's also, Kevin, there's a bipartisan infrastructure bill that was signed and helped pass, it was passed in Congress. There's three hundred and fifty thousand lead service lines, approximately four hundred and eighty school buildings across a third of New Jersey's districts, recorded lead levels over, exceeded fifteen parts per billion. So the EPA, not only does that, is that considered extremely high, but they have developed some federal funds to address these issues. And there's a webinar, an upcoming workshops, and a contact name of Marie Andajar from the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, who we can contact to get some additional information. And if you don't have that, I'll give you this copy. But, I mean, the people don't know, even if they have heard about this, which most people haven't, but even if they haven't, have heard about this, they don't know who to contact, because there's no specialists. So I can provide anybody who wants this with this paperwork.
The PCA has definitely indicated that you visit construction officials at this point, it is easy, they are not going to do this. They've already certified that. I'm allowed to know, Kristen, if you guys got it up.
Uh-uh.
On the north office, which is.
Yeah, they're not gonna be involved, they're not involved.
Not gonna do it. So, at the end of the day, again, this could be the situation where we'll grab this up with the. Well, I gave you a name. Now, if we do, I may end up having to do an ordinance here for it. I may have to do, because ultimately, we're gonna try to cooperate and have the landlords do it. If they don't ultimately, Walter, to answer your questions, we are responsible to compel if we're done. And we would, we would have to have an inspector do it. We can't charge a fee for that. So I think at the end of the day, I'm probably gonna give you guys an ordinance. I'm just trying to kind of, I called the league municipalities, there's a lot of confusion that I'm certainly here. So I'm trying not to get too, get you guys too far out in front of us, but as I see some ordinances that makes sense. I feel like, Joanna, I think upwards many, many people, there's very few certified lead inspectors in this state. They're very difficult to come by, so you can imagine that their time and expense is gonna be.
Who's gotta record this list and keep a, recording of who?
Yeah, exactly, we do, and I have no idea how we're gonna do that. That's what you were saying, because they said, how, we don't have a registry of all rented properties now. That our tax assessor doesn't have this, you know?
Put a sign out there and say, residents, contact. Krista, not my kids, wouldn't do that.
So anyway, you keep it under our finished business, and we, we will finish the business at some point.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
I'm sorry, there actually is a form that the township has, because for each of my grandparents, we'll side.
Well, that's the landlord.
That's the landlord registration.
But again, many, many people, only those, we're trying to.
That's exactly right.
Is there a information push that we can do on Facebook page to encourage residents to contact somebody to complete that form?
We'd have to assign somebody, we would have to assign somebody to do it.
The form, and I give it to Linda, so she's.
It gets filed with the clerk's office, but like Kevin said, it only gets filed if someone's trying to be evicted. I mean, we could try to push the form, but it's, it's something that's been gone for over years and years, so.
Yeah, we'll put it on.
It's not new.
We'll put it on the sign, on the digital sign.
Really? Well, two years from now, or are we talking now?
Two thousand twenty-four.
There you go.
So we're working on.
I know a lot of other towns do it on the edge of the right town hall, so as far as admins and, and, you know, if you have, you don't have a listing of who actually occupied property, you have nobody to notify them for. Two hundred foot, it's older, but it is, I mean, the parched waters, anything else that, you know, health matters, and then you can contact the resident, not owner. So I have to wonder if that, whether we should get that information to the right town hall, or, or, not just the tenant registration, but, uh, so you have to get a sufficient occupancy in between, like, if there's one that needs that.
Yeah, I mean, some towns, usually, obviously, more urbanized areas, definitely have, you know, landlord registration and inspection requirement, but then you need a code enforcement office, you need a lot of infrastructure for that.
And when you get a new tenant.
I always notice how that's working out here, and it's difficult to work with. So, yeah, I mean, there's, if you were in a more substantial town that does that type of thing, then at least knowing who's there is solved. But I don't, that would probably, again, expense you guys on the deal here, but, tough for a lot of it to be.
You know, in, in the beginning of this year, there was talk over here about doing a newsletter, and that would be something that would be extremely good to put on there, because landlords are responsible for water tests every five years. They're responsible for a CO, the smoke certification, every year if there's a change in, in the tenant. And now with the lead law, that's something else. So there are, and honestly, we would be protecting the landlord, because a tenant going in that doesn't have that information can very easily get out of their lease and can take, take the landlord to court.
With the amount of illegal, with the amount of illegal rentals that, that we know of?
Realtors are covered, and we tell our landlords everything, but the private ones, I know a lot of them don't do it.
No.
And they're supposed to do it.
I believe there's a fee, I remember the last time I did one of those laws, and it's a very minimal fee.
Twenty-five dollars?
Five dollars, something. Maybe you guys want to do something like ninety days, no fees, you know, maybe it sounds like exciting, like, be registered, ten for twenty-four, you're giving it twenty-five dollars. I know, maybe you'll get a premarking, or that would be good.
Well, you don't pay a fee here, though.
No.
No, yeah.
I would change your ten and I do. But it's so.
Mr. Mayor, before you go into new business, we need to cover the land conservancy closing documents. Mr. Benbrook, if you just want to explain the executing of the closing documents?
Yeah, they are.
We don't have, we don't have them.
We don't have them yet, yeah.
Right.
So, we're trying to close that September twenty-nine. That's what I, I just got the word yesterday, and that was sent a year ago. She, they're actually, they did the survey work, they're, they're basically done everything here, and they're even taking delivery, preparing draft closing documents, that's perfectly fine, I mean, as well. So, because obviously they're trying to close before next week, my thought was, you guys are requesting a motion to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the closing documents, subject to, up to, the attorney's final approval. We know the price and everything, so there's no issue there, we already have a contract. If you make that motion, then we can close without having to wait for nothing.
I would make that motion.
Yeah. And they're not hold that up?
No, they don't want to hold that up.
Okay. Having a motion and a second, can we have a roll call, please, Kristen?
Mr. McAtora, Mr. Orkot, Mrs. Van Valkenburg, Mrs. Waldron, Mayor Morehead.
Yes. All right. Yeah, let's.
I'm good for something.
Yep. Let's get that property sold.
That's three, Kristen. That's three. You're done tonight.
I'm sorry.
Onto new business. Got a rabies clinic coming up.
Um, yes, so December tenth, I think we discussed this at the last meeting, so I do apologize. But Hardwick is requesting, they're not gonna be doing a rabies clinic this year. They don't get that much of a turnout, so we're just gonna kind of do it all in one.
Open it up to Hardwick residents?
Yeah, I mean, it's really open to anybody in the state, but I'm just letting you know that.
We can advertise it there.
Hardwick residents are probably gonna come to ours.
Okay. And that's December tenth.
And it'll be at the DPW building in Blairstown.
For folks watching at home. We also have a shredding event coming up.
That will be on a Saturday. I don't have the time yet, but it's October twenty-ninth.
And like I said, I, anyone looking around their house, you probably have stuff to shred. So it's a good way to, to get rid of that. Roadside cleanup?
The roadside cleanup is through our Clean Communities. That's when our organizations come, it's kind of a fundraiser for our organizations. They'll come and clean some roads up.
And they each get like five hundred dollars?
Five hundred per group. Maureen is, this is the date that she picked. This, I believe this is also the same date as Nolton.
What date is it?
It is what it is.
October twenty-second.
It's a Saturday, October twenty-second.
I've done it quite a few years. It's, it's interesting. You get a real idea of how many people we have drinking behind the wheel.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yep. Certainly is.
The little shop.
Oh, my gosh. So, and it's, and as I, as I said earlier, the street sweeper does not get all of the trash that's on the side of the roads, and those roadside cleanups are, are amazing, because nothing is left behind. Well, number one, we already discussed that. We are, we did have that pump failure this week, and went by this morning. Pump company was there. They, they pulled the old pump out. It's in the process of being replaced. And hopefully, we can get our filtration and manganese treatment.
How much is that pump gonna be, do we know?
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three?
Yeah. Yeah, kind of didn't have a, didn't have a choice there that has, has to be on. Thankfully, though, our, our new well has been keeping up with, with demand while the other one's offline, which is, which is nice, but you gotta have both of them operating. We need to advertise for snowplow drivers?
Yes. It's time.
Yep.
Eighteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Just need approval to do that.
That's not bad. That's not bad. Do they need a CDL?
Uh, we're gonna use the same, I think we're using the same format that we did last year, which they did need a CDL.
Okay.
Is that with their truck or our trucks?
Our trucks.
Yeah.
Just like it has been in the past.
Mayor, what about the dogs running at large thing? Are we gonna talk about?
That's during his report.
Okay.
It's in his report.
Okay.
So we're all okay with the?
Yeah, do we need to, do we need to vote on?
If you don't mind.
Motion for approval.
Okay.
At eighteen dollars now?
Yeah.
It's, it's eighteen to twenty.
No, it was extremely low.
For a CDL.
It's eighteen to twenty, but we advertise at eighteen. I confirmed with Eric before.
It is, but it's, you know.
So, so should the motion be eighteen to twenty?
If you'd like.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should do a roll call.
We're not spending any money, though.
Well, we are. We have to pay for the advertising.
This is just for the advertising.
Yeah, we still have to pay for it.
Okay, roll call then?
Mr. McAtora, Mr. Orkot, Mrs. Van Valkenburg, Mrs. Waldron, Mayor Morehead.
Yes. Handicap cleanup pickups, that's, is that during?
So that is, if anybody remembers, when we do the cleanup, we offer handicap to be picked up. We never did that. So Eric is just letting everybody know, we still haven't done it. And depending on when we pave Mount Vernon, will depend on when the handicap pickup is, so.
Was it also seniors or no? Who's strictly handicapped?
It's strictly handicap. We decided that last year.
Okay.
I thought that was during when we did the cleanup.
The spring cleanup.
It was ne, it was said when we did the spring cleanup that it was not going to include the pickup, when we, when we okayed it.
Okay.
We did have that discussion, because it's a totally separate, DPW does that at a totally separate time.
All right, so how are residents gonna know that they can have that done?
Well.
On the sign.
So last year, last year we had two or three. We didn't have many, so.
You say you couldn't have that many residents?
We could actually probably go up front of the list that we had last year, and tell them, and tell them.
But we have, we have nice roll-offs now, and pull up the.
I really think we should be doing.
We have a lot of standing up front, we just put that one with a sign.
Sandwich board.
The weekends.
One of those, one of those going out of business.
You can stand out there and flash it on the weekend.
Well, since we're discussing the sign, I'm gonna bring it up. We have to go out for a bid for the electrical work with the current sign that we got a bid, that we got a quote for. So do we want to stick with that, or do we want to look for a company that will do it, all in one?
I would rather just get the company to do it, get this thing done with. We were talking about this for two or three years.
I stay with you a hundred percent. Just asking.
Which changing companies?
No, no, we just have to find an electrician to do it.
And we have to go for a bid out for it.
Yeah.
We have to do a bid. I'm just letting everybody know.
How much is it gonna cost?
It's gonna probably be about twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
For the electrical work?
Mm-hmm.
That's almost as much as the sign.
Just the running extension cord.
Go like twenty feet.
Yeah.
That just sounds like a, damn.
So we're moving forward with the bids?
Why don't you quote wires and get a quote from wires?
You can't get quotes, the problem is that we go over forty-seven.
We can't get quotes, yeah, we can't do that. Then, then they are eliminated.
All right. And this is, this, this is being paid for with the COVID.
The R, yes.
It's a federal grant.
Yeah, it's all coming out of the money.
So do we need a motion to?
Yes.
Just go out the bid?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All right. We're not spending any money this time, so it can be all in favor.
No, it's paid for.
No, we're paying.
We're, we're, we're just going out to bid.
We're just going out to bid, I just need an all in favor. We're just going out to bid. I just need an all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, let's get those bids.
Eric's already been working on them.
More bid specs?
Back on old business, I'm just kidding.
Okay, the land use board recommendations, is that the?
I think we've took, we took care of that with the.
Yeah, this, this was, I think on the kennel subject, right? I kind of thought before thought and then, I actually, I put it in my report, but since it's on there, basically when I first saw it, I wasn't, basically I don't know what to do with this, because, you know, this would have to be basically part of a master plan. And then just recently, I guess Mr. Vaskey, is he the?
Yes, he's chair. He's chair.
He circulated email, which the mayor's kind of sent me saying, hey, we already did this in 2020, which, when I looked at the language, he said that they did it with respect to kennels. So that's part of the taking care of. We can't do anything with the pet shop aspect of their catalog, because that would require another.
The master plan review.
Yeah, so now that I have that squared away.
This came up because of an issue we had?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will start working on a draft.
Okay.
By after we get that circulated, as I said to Christine, we can get it done in time, you know, on November meeting, we can get it done this year.
Okay.
You guys are gonna have some decisions to make as to whether you want this to be, as I said, this is gonna have to be conditionally permitted use, because the land use board is kind of like specific conditions, such as mineral acre size and things like that. So you can't, it's not like you can just amend the ordinance and say, okay, you know, residential houses, you know, this, that, and you have to put a specific condition on standards for the ones in there.
Right.
And as part of that, you guys are gonna have to decide whether you want that to be a minor site plan with no notice to the joint property owners.
You better notice the judge.
Or, or location, where we're talking about locating it. Because one of the issues that came up was individuals doing rescues with kennels in their backyard, right? That was one issue. There were other issues.
Remember the one on five twenty one?
Yes, yes.
How many times?
Yes. Yes.
Our animal control officer had to go there?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ten acres doesn't seem like a whole lot of property for, for doing kennels and, and that, because you're backing up to a lot of other properties. We had issues in the past.
I'll prepare a draft. They also limited it to certain zones. I think it's the.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to ask you. I'd like to talk to you about this on the side.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, please, I'll try to get something that can form that we can all start talking about.
Okay, alright. Okay, yep.
Alright, Yards Creek Restoration Project, I have a printout here of.
I just forwarded this information to you. I just wanted to make sure everybody saw it. So you don't really have to make any action. It's just really, all three of those, it's just to make sure that you understand and receive them.
So they're doing more work at Yards Creek?
Taking the stuff out, taking out the old culverts and other property.
Where are the culverts? It said six culverts?
That's what I read, I think, right?
Yeah, where are they? I should find you the document, so.
What, what is it?
I don't think they're major. There's nothing major about them. I think it's just culverts under the road, just, you know.
Do we have, do we have?
I'm thinking like.
No, no, it's not like.
I'm thinking big, like railroad culvert.
They're my neighbors.
Do we have a beginning and end date on this, on this restoration project? Do we have a beginning and end date on this?
Deb, the information that I gave you is what I received.
Okay. If you come across anything more, there was a lot of complaints by residents when they did the other.
I know, I am their neighbor.
I know.
I can't be more of a neighbor than me.
It was the noise and it was the, a lot of the wells were getting.
Yes, yes, and they had truck traffic, a ton of truck traffic.
Well, that was all going to fifty Mount Vernon.
No, 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 no. Private roads. They were cutting, crossed on private roads.
For somebody else to get more.
Yeah. We've got this, we, an email from Representative Gottheimer with the new resource for broadband. They've, they're making eligible households, giving you, providing up to thirty dollars a month off their internet bills, as well as a hundred dollar, one-time hundred dollar discount off laptops, tablets, computers. That's part of that bipartisan infrastructure bill. And trying to see if there's a website that people can go to.
So I have tried to put this information that we received on the website, and I emailed them asking for some sort of flyer, because I can't, the website's just ridiculous.
Here, I have it. I have it, Rob, I can give this to you, but it's.
If you're an Optimum user, it doesn't count.
No, it's, it's an Optimum. Yeah, no, it is. Optimum is it.
They weren't in there.
It is now. Optimum is, and so, but most of them are not. But the point is, here.
Oh, here it is, yeah.
Income threshold.
Right there.
Yes, this is, this is all.
Altis Optimum.
Altis, okay.
Okay, so, but the other issue is you may want to talk to Planet Hollywood, Planet Network, rather, about seeing if.
Right.
We can get them included in this.
Okay, so the, the, the website to see if you, if you, obviously, if you qualify and to apply is acpbenefit.org.
Maybe Christine can put this up on the, the site for us?
I can't put the whole thing on. I have to put pieces.
Just contact information?
Yeah, I can do that, after that.
Okay.
And then Debbie, you were talking about the, the correspondence, the, to help the communities locate lead pipes. Is that what you were talking about earlier?
Yeah.
In, in our case, we have to do a lot of replacement of feed lines. So we're certainly doing our part on getting rid of those, those old pipes. Seems to do it for correspondence.
There's a lot of grants that are coming out now, an awful lot of grants.
Yeah, there's a lot of money floating around after COVID.
Do we have a grant writer?
Well, you know, I talked to Christine about this again, because we did have a grant writer years ago. Really probably wasn't the best time to have it with everything. And I think the way things have gone now, you know, with us having the tax and, and all of these grants coming through, we don't have a grant writer, so we're never gonna get any grants unless we have one. I really think you need to consider that, again, you know, getting a grant. Now, she said that Belvedere, I think it is, Belvedere has the gentleman that we had, the company that we had. And she says he's been getting them quite a few grants, well over the cost for them to, to hire him to write the grants.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give one to Charlie.
Talk to Christine again, talk to her and get some information from her, because.
The congressman also, Joe, gave us a, a grant, a possibility for grant, for police. And it's basically for supported hiring, training, body cameras, and much more. For, it's called the Fair Chance at Grants.
Well, there's the fire company that, that has come out.
Yeah, but this is for the police department.
Yeah. The, Charlie, you have any, any insight on Belvedere's ability to write grants?
I had to represent Belvedere and that. Joanne's right, they, I was kind of skeptical, because I, in fact, I think I told Mayor Denny down there, I said, I think players don't have these same records. It didn't work out well at all. But I, I think they drastically changed their, their fee structure, number one. You guys, I think, were fixed into.
Thirty, thirty thousand. We didn't, we didn't have any municipal grant at the time, so we weren't eligible.
It's the one that said, you guys, thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Their agreement now with Belvedere, they're on a month-to-month, at a much reduced rate, and we can terminate on thirty days' notice.
That's great.
They're on a very short leash. So that was one big change. And as far as the results, they applied for a lot.
Yeah.
They, they have, they have probably gotten a grant money that we paid that for sure, so.
Thanks, it's nice to know.
One of the, one of the changes in their fee structure is probably.
One of the other, one of the other options I was gonna think about was the fact that the league of municipalities is coming up. Kristin's gonna be down there, and she could be picking up business cards. They'll have, all those guys will have booths down there that do that, grant writing kind of stuff on the floor, so please bring us back some stuff so we have some options. Maybe we'll talk this, we, we brought this up at, at our, I guess, our county league, what do they call it?
Governors Association.
Governing.
Governing Body Association. We talked about that with, with some of the towns, the fact that we were lamenting that we just don't have a grant writer in any of the towns. I've been kind of keeping that in the back of my mind, like, how do we do a shared service on a grant writer or something, you know, a body? But I don't think that's gonna happen. And the county has a grant writer, but they don't have enough, they're, they didn't, they were not interested, I don't think they are, in, in letting them, letting us use them.
So I'm a member of the Warren County Government Advisory Board, and last night we actually talked about bringing it up for motion at the October meeting. Our, our goal is to advise the county on the best way that they can improve and maintain their environmental programs. And one of the things we touched upon last night was the county making a grant writer available to township if you don't have one, specifically for grants that have to do with environmental issues such as like lead pipes. So our advisory board would collect that information and what grants are available to commissioners, and the commissioners would allocate, would allocate funding, I guess, like you guys would, would like apply for, because their office can't manage grant writing for twenty-two municipalities. But you guys would be able to like apply for, kind of like Yonah waiting us for their grant writers.
I like, I, I like Kevin's idea.
You can do that, because then you have someone working.
Yeah, because right now, like, our fire department has a grant writer, our, our police department, we used Lisa, worked, did some work for us.
Lisa did it, yeah?
Yeah, for, to get a grant. And, but, you know, that was like a special case. It's not saying she could work into her normal schedule, but it's.
That was for the generator.
Yes, exactly. Extremely beneficial.
We're missing out on money, because we do not have someone keeping an eye on the stuff. Sometimes the stuff comes in eleventh hour. The fire department just missed out on a grant, because they missed the deadline.
Rob, if you want, I'll get in touch with Joe Canning, the mayor down there, and just talk to him directly and see. I think he's pretty happy with it. I mean, it's, it's one of those things, from a legal standpoint, I'm not always convinced of it, but I do know the structure of the contract was much more appealing, and I think that, I think they're pretty happy. So if you want, I can put it.
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Maybe we go back to that. I'm sure they'll come back.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else you need, Christine?
The only, the only thing is, I hope that, I mean, Josh Gottimer has been very good in giving us information constantly about what's going on out there with grants and everything else. And I know that we're gonna be into a different district supposedly starting January, and I hope that that rep will do the same. Communication.
The communication has been unbelievable with his offices.
Yeah, he has a good, he has a good office of folks, definitely. Okay, from the township attorney, have anything else for us that you haven't touched on already, Kevin?
Okay, anything except Joanne's question about the, you know, control officers, the request to be agreed to fine. So I took a look at the ordinance. I was gonna potentially draft something, but we don't actually have any specific fine for dog running at large in that, that chapter. So it would fall back to our general penalty ordinance, which we adopted some years ago, which I think would clear that. So the range is anything from, you know, zero to twenty-five hundred, so.
So is that where that, where's he getting that fifty from now? Is that?
A separate article on animals regarding the waste in that chapter.
Right.
And there's a specific fine for that, limited to that little piece of the ordinance.
Oh, not good.
So.
I think it was mostly concerned with the dogs running at large.
It's, it's the biggest thing he responds to.
Because we've got, we've got.
Again, general penalty ordinance is very broad, so I, and I'll, I don't have his email address, but I can take a pass along.
Let me send it to me.
He goes, before, he can, he can propose to the judge any, any fine within that range.
Okay.
He has recitus, you know?
Charlie, is he asking for fifty to a hundred?
The problem is, you know, he has one person that has fifteen violations.
Right.
You say, it's ridiculous, so, so yeah, if he has.
It can be escalating, is what we're saying?
Broad range, that's great.
Yeah, that's, that's why we did that years ago, that general penalty actually was when I was here last night. And I think it's very effective, and it covers every ordinance in our book, so we have, and that, that ordinance, what I, what I did is I adopted the minimums and maximums of the state statute.
Good.
So.
I would love to see that. I would love to see it accomplished.
He's not letting it.
Yeah.
If we can ask the judge, or particular people like you.
Be surprised if you didn't know that.
Can you just send me a link to that, where I can, you know, forward that off to him, and that way he can pass on to prosecutor's office.
The, the animal control officer, Charlie O'Teston, the animal control officer came to the land use board meeting and was available for, you know, a lot of back and forth discussion about, as we're going over this kennel ordinance. One of the things that was pretty eye-opening to me was that barking dogs is not really a problem. And, and Charlie can probably explain this better to me, but there, there are actually, they can control the barking, like. How does, how did that work, Charlie?
He's actually one of the few people on the state that can actually measure the volume and frequency and how long and.
But they put these, but they have some kind of electronically, you can keep dogs from barking.
I have it, I have it.
I didn't know that.
I have one. It's, you can put it in your yard, it can go three hundred feet, it can go nine hundred feet, or you can put it in your house. I have it for my condo, in case my dog barks when we're away, that he doesn't disturb my neighbors. And it works very well. It's, it's very cheap. It's like sixty bucks.
Do you leave your dog down there all year, or you're not, you're up here?
Oh, yeah, that's what I do. An hour out to dinner.
We're one of the few municipalities that does have a, a dog barking ordinance, so we can actually enforce it, because we have the signs behind it. So it's, it's quite interesting.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be paying to do it, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
The only other thing I want to add, say if you're stopping, we don't need an executive session on that.
Right, no.
I did get a hold of the risk manager, that's now been assigned out, actually Florida, Georgia, we represent.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll get that.
Excellent.
Okay.
From the township clerk, Kristen?
Okay, I do have a few things. First off, Sunday, September twenty-fifth, the Warren County Pollution Center is having a household hazardous waste collection. I did print out a flyer, and it's on, near the agenda, so you can pick that up.
I need that.
Two. It's the hazardous waste, yes. It's for the whole county. Eight AM to twelve PM, Sunday, September twenty-fifth.
Batteries?
First, it's paint and all that.
It's household hazardous waste, antifreeze, mercury, pesticide, fire extinguisher, driveway sealer, cleaner, solvents, corrosives, gasoline, oil mix propane tanks, fluorescent tubes, varicose bulbs, various chemicals, transmission fluid, oil, paints.
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 Oil paints?
Oil.
Latex.
Latex, they want you to dry it out.
Outkight paints. No batteries, no latex paint, no latex driveway, sealer, motor oil, or car batteries.
It's because latex.
Got it?
Okay.
They found our bodies.
That's what it says. I'm sorry.
Jean McKenna, Jean McKenna taught me well about keeping batteries out of the landfill.
Well, that Mrs. McKenna.
And I've got like a giant.
That Mrs. McKenna is a.
I can, I can get rid of the batteries for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many do you have? Oh, alkaline? Alkaline you can throw out. You can't throw out niac, you can't throw out lithium. Alkaline has such a low level. Yeah, you can, you can literally throw them out, man. You can look that up, it's online. You put them in a pasta salad as well, they're great.
Okay.
It's how safe they are.
Lot of information there. I have another request, so I do apologize. I know I'm asking a lot today. Warren County Clerks Association is doing a quarterly seminar. And I am asking if we can have it here. It would be on a Tuesday, and it would be during working hours.
Oh, now it's different, right?
They'll pay the three hundred dollars if you're requesting it.
No, we're not charging for that. Have the thing.
Do they need any colored copies?
I told them that we don't have colored copy.
We don't do colored copies.
So everyone's okay with that?
You need a motion?
No, I'm fine with it.
She's already used facilities.
And then one more request, and I know I'm pushing this, and I, and I don't need an answer today, I would like you to think about it.
Oh, this is gonna be good.
Yeah. The office.
No.
People are asking if we can have an in-service day, meaning that we would close the building. I know Walter was gonna say no, half a day at least. We closed the building for half a day. See? To go through our papers, to just kind of cleanhouse, let's just put it that way. We don't need an answer, I'm just asking you to think about it for the next meeting.
Sunday, we work great, what do you think?
If you'd like to pay us all overtime, that's not a problem.
We, just, just in what, in the paperwork we create.
After the shredder comes? I'll make it after the shredder comes. I'd love to do that.
You'll have a lot to shred after that one.
And we have to make room for a newspaper that we don't have any place to.
Do we have any, still have any place for our old engineering?
They're currently, that, well, that's another thing. We need to go through that stuff as well. We have a lot of papers.
The mayor and I are gonna go in that back room, trust me. We're gonna, so let us know.
We're coming down.
Let us know what date that is, because we're coming down.
Well, I, I need you to think about it first, if you'd like us to do that, and then I'd be more than happy.
We should, we need, we need to do that.
I know you're in favor of doing it. I need you to ask the other four if they're in favor of doing it.
I'm in favor of, of cleaning this place, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Will you steal all the documents back there? Absolutely.
Yeah. We, we have storage, really underutilized storage areas here.
Absolutely. That back room is a mess.
Yeah, okay.
I'm done, thank you, everybody.
Very good, very good.
You got everything you wanted, of course you're done.
Committee member McAtura.
First thing, I want to start off with the videos. We've had some difficulty in the last two videos. Numerous reasons why, so hopefully tonight it's, it's gonna work, and we'll have it up very shortly for you, so I apologize for that. For the police, yesterday we finally received our two thousand and twenty-two police vehicle. So the two thousand and one that we ordered still isn't here, but we got the two thousand and two. The nice thing about that is it was actually out on patrol today, so they put it in use right away. This is from a company in Frenchtown that did this for us. The Durango will now be going back to the dealership to have something else fixed. It'll be stripped, and then it's gonna be repurposed for our ACO, so he's gonna have a car for his purposes. We also have four officers running in tunnels to tower, that's on September twenty-fifth. And, you know, so give them a lot of, you know, I commend them for doing that. The fire company donated two breaching tools to the police department. And Chief Slater is conducting a training session for all the officers to use the tools. We also have, all the officers are now being scheduled for our yearly active shooter training, which is something unfortunately in our society that is obviously needed. Officer Dylan is attending, he's gonna be the train-to-trainer for defensive tactics for law enforcement. So when he comes back, he's gonna be able to train all our officers, so that will be nice. And other than that, Officer Hart, our newest officer, is off of field training duties, so he is out now performing full-time duties. So the police department is doing quite well. As far as calls, you know, they're pretty much the same as they've been every year, like traffic enforcement, two hundred and sixty-five, and you go on and on. But they're, they're basically, they're out there and they're constantly vigilant, doing the duties. The biggest thing that I see them doing right now is a lot of property checks, and obviously a lot of school safety checks. So when I look at those numbers, they're very high. As far as the animal control, as we talked about the fines, so, you know, our council is kind of apprised us on that. I do have, and anybody who knows our animal control officer, he's, he's very diligent in what he does. So we actually have a copy of a use agreement for the vehicle, so I'm gonna pass that on to our council, let them look at it. I went through it, I made my changes, and I don't even know if we need it, to be honest with you, but I do have it, and I'm gonna pass that on to them. And that will be for the Dodge Durango that we have, which is actually under the, the office of, of the police chief. And so he'll be letting us know what we can do with that. The one other problem that we have with the animal control officer is the municipality, surrounding municipalities are having problems with not necessarily getting anybody to respond. We had an incident happen several weeks ago, about a week and a half ago. A municipality refused to respond. First, they, the state police had an incident out in the interstate eighty. It was an overdose, a very aggressive dog in the car. The problem was, in center console of the car, was all the drugs. So the dog is in the car, and they don't know if the dog got to the drugs or not, the dog was being very aggressive. The bottom line is, that municipality refused to respond. So they were in dire need. They ended up calling Blairstown. Our ACO said he would go out, and he actually crowded the dog. He said by far the worst animal he's ever dealt with. I mean, it chewed the seat up. It, it was a vicious dog. So I think that's something that I've already passed on to the mayor, the letter from the, or the email from the state police. And I think he's forwarding that on, I'm not sure, to, to the appropriate mayor. There's been conversations. Subsequent to that call, we just had another call last week for another municipality, where somebody refused to respond. So we've been in discussion, and we're starting to think that, well, okay, we'll, we'll go out to these municipalities, but we're gonna set a fee for it. So that's something that we're gonna obviously talk amongst ourselves and figure out, and we present it to the public, and we'll go from there. Other than that, he's been very busy, as always, summer months, forty-some calls last month, forty-some calls this month. I think it was forty-five this month. And the game is obviously dogs at large, cats, a lot of bat calls. So if you have a bat in your house, you probably want one of them. But that's it for the animal control. And then the last thing is Ambios Core. They had done a fundraiser, fundraiser, and it was unbeknownst to me, those little blue signs that everybody has on their house for their numbers. And so we, we obviously purchased them, and so fundraiser, fundraiser for them. But when you think about, they light up at night, you can. But when you think about, they light up at night, you can see them everywhere. It's a great thing, and I kind of wish everybody in the municipality would have it. When you're going out at nighttime and you're searching for a house and a house number, it can be quite difficult if you just have those black and white numbers out there. So I would highly encourage anybody in the municipality, you know, to support the Ambulance Corps and purchase these things. I think mine was only like $30 apiece or something. But you see them everywhere, they're bright blue, probably most of you have them. But again, I would encourage everybody to get them. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Those incidents where we had to travel out of town, and we've talked about this in the past, that our animal control officer was chastised for traveling out of town and incurring mileage and what have you. The one on Route 80 was a, was a safety issue and officer's safety, tow truck driver's safety at stake. And surrounding towns really, really need to hold the people that they pay tax dollars to accountable for what they do. And they really need to take a close look at the service that, or lack of service that these folks are providing. And I really commend Scott Hendricks for, for doing what he did. He didn't ask for permission. The state police asked him to do that. They said it was a safety issue, and he went and did it, and I commended him for that. And it was quite a dog, he said.
The state police, you know, thank you, Chief Slater, for allowing him to do that.
No, but we have towns that are taking taxpayers' money to pay people that don't, don't really do the service that we have here, and it's a shame. Deputy Mayor Orkut, you got a new position, I heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
What, what went on in the past few weeks?
Start with it.
Sorry?
I'm surprised you didn't start with that.
I would have.
He needed an introduction.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I was recently appointed by the freeholders to the Warren County Municipal and Charitable Conservancy Trust Fund Committee. And at my first meeting, lo and behold, I was elected chairman. And that looks like a really interesting place to be. I'm kind of liking it already. The mayor of Phillipsburg had, had been the chairman. I think somebody forgot to tell him that he wasn't gonna be chairman anymore. But anyway, the applications, and this goes back to what we were just talking about, about grant writing. You know, all those, all those requests for funding for historical or open space projects are unbelievably complex in detail for the, for the county grants. And I'm sure, you know, most, most any grant that we're talking about has the same kind of back, you know, paperwork document, paperwork requirements, very onerous requirements. And it's just nothing, I'm just reiterating it, it's not something we have, we have the ability to do here. Nobody, nobody on the committee can sit down and do grant writing. And, you know, certainly our employers aren't, are in a position to do that. So, yeah, we're gonna have to, if we're gonna go after grants, we're gonna, you know, we're on the right track with bringing a grant writer in. I'm liking that idea a lot. As far as the lead pipe, we talked about the lead pipes. This is a water company kind of thing. We are responsible for replacing the lead pipe from the street into the, into the, into the homes. A lot of that was done when we did the mains and everything, and we're doing, the road guys are, DPW guys are doing a survey right now on homes to see. And it's looking like, they're not done yet, but it looks like maybe, maybe it's gonna be 10% or so of the, of the people. So, but it's 180 homes, so, you know, it's gonna be 18 or 20. Depending upon the scope of it and the complexity, it's probably gonna be something we're gonna have to contract out. I mean, we just can't, we're not gonna be able to just have our road guys pick them off. But maybe we will, maybe we'll take a look, see if, maybe they're all real kind of easy ones and, and we'll do it that way.
There's money out there for us.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's what we were.
They don't want them out of our pockets.
No, 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 definitely, yeah. So there's no, well, so there's no sense in worrying about our guys.
Somebody on Bridge Street that's gonna want it right away.
So anyway, the guys have been busy patching roads, obviously prior to this meeting, getting the road paving projects done. They prepped, they've also been prepping Mount Vernon to get that. They're gonna do that before the month is out, I think I heard, you heard me say earlier. Well over a million dollars in road overlay and resurfacing this year. Really, a really good aggressive program. This stuff that will, and a lot of that stuff will last for many, many, many years. And the new, the new guy, who some, some folks on the committee did not vote for his, him, but it turned out to be a very.
And the reason was?
Because you didn't meet him, but.
Because we had no information.
I never met.
We even hired him.
I never met the new police officer until he was hired, so.
He was vetted before they got to.
But at any rate, he's working out very well. The guys like him, he gets along, and he's a good worker, so that's, that's worked out to our advantage. And I don't have a lot more than that. That's enough said for one night.
Okay. Committee member Van Valkenburg.
Okay. Lorraine is here, which I want to point out. She's been doing a great job. Lorraine and Barbara did the registrations for the senior luncheon that we are having, and we have 53, 53 signed up already, five more possible on there. We can go up to about 80 residents in our town. So we've been out and about, even walking the other day, walking through the Acme, I'm telling everybody there, if they're a senior, I have to make sure they're a senior first. But it is going to be on Wednesday, September 28th, at Procollo Winery from 12 to 3. We are also having someone come in to do trivia, a trivia contest. I picked up some things to give out, and Deb's been soliciting.
I have, I've hit every.
Get certificates and things.
Business owner, restaurant owner for gifts.
Yeah. So that, that's gonna be a lot of fun. So anybody on the committee that wants to go, please get in touch with Lorraine, sign up.
We extended the deadline for the.
Yeah, we're still taking signups.
Yeah.
Of course, we only have 55.
Yeah.
About 55 people, so.
Till next Thursday.
Till next Thursday, okay. That's what Jessica said?
Yeah.
Till next Thursday. Okay, head count by next Thursday. Okay. Thank you, Lorraine.
The, again, just to give you a heads up, there's a bill out there, A3935, that they're looking at. And this is prohibits adoption of any state rule or regulation mandating electric heating or water heating systems in buildings prior to the issuance of the Department of Community Affairs report. So our, our, the New Jersey Realtors, I find out a lot of the stuff through them, which is really good. But the state is looking at doing a bill. The DCA wants everybody to start putting in electric heaters and electric, water heaters, electric heating.
Give me this.
It's nuts. It's just like California saying electric cars by a certain date. So.
If that working out for them, they had to turn off the power.
There's a bill out there, they want the DCA to issue the report to how many, whatever, all the details about it, before putting out any legislation like this. It's unbelievable, just incredible. The recreation, Pat's doing a great, Pat, Pat does a phenomenal job. Just go on the website, you find everything out on the website, what she does. And she does so many things, can't keep up with that girl. She's got the energy. This is the happy department. And boy, it really.
No complaints there ever.
Yeah. Nope, not over there. The elementary school enrollment is up to 430 kids right now, approximately. So quite a few have moved in. They were at the end of last, last school season, they were at 396, I think it was, and we're up to 4, 430 already. I don't know what the count is at the high school. And Deb had sent, sent us something. North Warren Regional put out a survey for everybody to look at, to do. There's maybe three questions on here that you can't answer on what you would like to find in a superintendent. I think they already have one picked out already. But anyway.
Ask question. Make decisions and ask the question.
Yeah. So that's it, that's.
What was it? Do you know the status of the appraisal for male school?
They're not doing it.
Now they're not doing it?
No, no. And I don't think they have any intention of selling that either. They may want to use it for something, so that's the last, I hope.
Okay.
That's it. So I just asked about the appraisal again. I said, well, what happened with the appraisal? They're not doing it.
Committee member Waldron.
Okay. Joanne discussed the area that I'm concerned with, along with her, with their senior citizens. So that part is pretty much taken care of. So I'm really going to talk about a few things that are actually positive. The donations from the business owners, as soon as they told them we were having a senior citizen event, they tripped over themselves to, you know, call me up and say, okay, come on, come on down, we'll give you gift certificate. And there's still like four or five more who have heard that I did it. Places that we don't even normally get certificates from are now offering these certificates. So it'd be great for the seniors to get that kind of an award. There's two new programs, and one of them is recipient in our area, and I'm not, because of privacy concerns, I'm not gonna mention any names, but it's a veteran. And the veteran has not been able to walk for a period of a decade. And he is now the new recipient of what they call an echo skeleton, and it allows him the mobility now to get up and walk. So for the first time in a decade, he now has mobility to get up and move and maneuver around his house like anybody else would, with very limited, you know, need for like a wheelchair or anything like that. So that's really good. And they just approved a new cancer drug. The cancer drug originally came out for colon cancer, and that drug was, was so well received that in every single recipient who took it, with all different stages of cancer, that drug treated it and all, it obliterated all signs of cancer in the individuals. So now Memorial Sloan Kettering is using that drug to do new test programs in all different kinds of cancer, from bladder cancer to breast cancer, et cetera. And so now that holds promise for treating all different kinds of cancer with no, you know, no repercussions and no invasion.
What's the name of that?
They, it's called M U R, is the initials for it, but they haven't come out with a specific, they haven't announced a specific name, but it was under a program that was sponsored by Memorial Sloan Kettering. So other than that, I did ask our lawyer to look into two contracts at the last meeting, and I don't know if you've had enough. You, okay, that's all right. I just want, I want you to, the contracts are for the Jones property and the Gorab property. Okay? And the reason, yeah, there's a commitment to a deadline date on that, that those properties, we have to make specific, we have to meet specific conditions in order to be in compliance. And I think we're coming to that deadline. I think it was in 2023. So I just want to make you aware of it so that we.
Jones and Gorab.
Gorab, G O R A B. So just so that we're, you know, we're in compliance, that's all.
Which is now far better.
Far better.
Yes.
Far better is what.
Okay. Okay. Oh, one last thing. I don't know whether, people have to be very vigilant with their computers and what they do and who they, they contact when they're on their computers and what, where they buy things from when they're on the computers. Because people are getting hacked, and it's not just local. I mean, I got hacked myself, and it was from a very reputable site, and my charge card was stolen and so on. But they, in New Jersey, the Iranian nationals are now charged in a, in a massive hacking scheme which targeted New Jersey computers. There's three of them. The reason I tell you that is because it came up in an issue with a Hackensack Police Department. So just, you know, be, just be very vigilant with what you do with your computers.
There was a Somerset County Police Department that was hacked ransomware.
Yes.
And they had to pay it.
That's correct. That's what I was gonna say, union.
You don't have much of a choice.
Union Township Municipal had to pay it also. They were hacked also, and that can happen to any of us here.
Sounds familiar, right, Kevin?
Yeah. I don't have too much.
We usually cover all my stuff in the body of the, of the evening, but I've got a report from our fire department, from our deputy chief. They're, they finished installing a standpipe in the pond at Mohican Farms. If you don't know what a standpipe is, it is a pipe that the trucks can hook up to, and it goes down directly into the pond, and they can draft from the pond where you don't have a fire hydrant available, and that's most of our town. They, they'll have enough water there to fight any fires. And in that area, they're also looking into installing a standpipe on Mount Vernon Road in the area of Yards Creek, taking advantage of the bodies of water that are there as well. So that's a very, very good thing that they're, that they're doing to keep us safe. 25 calls for service in the month of August for Blairstown Host Company, number one. They had 12 in Blairstown, seven in Hardwick, and three in Freelingheisen. I don't think there was anything else I, I think we covered most, most everything. Yeah. Anything else that anyone wants to bring before the committee?
I'm there.
Yeah? Anyone? Eggplant parm? We're talking about eggplant parm down there right now? Is that what's happening? We'll just.
Oh, no. That's good. It's my parm.